Okay, let's bring this meeting to order. It's the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of September 9th. And has per been our distinct honor and usual procedure since COVID has started is to read into the record our new procedures since we have some remote people attending the hearing as well as following Governor Pritzker's order for public hearings. So I'll read this so everybody will be on the same page on how we're going to proceed this evening. So, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled September 9th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, the chairman of the commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in attendance, I am joined by community development director David DeGroot, city planner Chayton Prue, and our public hearing transcriber, and our commissioners. We have Commissioner Mead, Commissioner Moran, Commissioner Metaskill, Commissioner Slifka, and Commissioner Holman. Commissioner Mim Evans will not be attending this evening. To accommodate public participation, the city of Geneva's meetings are now a combination of in-person and virtual by also being livestreamed to allow public to hear all discussion, testimony, and roll call votes in real time. Virtual attendees may watch or participate in a livestream meeting by accessing the link provided on the meeting agenda filed on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see notice regarding meeting and public comment rule modification due to COVID-19, a link to which is provided in the agenda for this evening. With our use of virtual meeting platform tonight, there may be some technical difficulties as we move through the agenda, so please bear with us. This evening, the commission will hold two public hearings. The first public hearing is for requests related to propose 53.7 acre, .78 acre warehouse distribution center located at the southeast of Kirk Road and Division Street intersection. The second public hearing is for requests related to propose semi-truck repair facility at the northwest corner of Old Kirk Road and Reed Road. Every individual desiring to listen or participate in the public hearings has been provided that opportunity through participation information included in various public notices and the agenda for this meeting. Public hearing notices with the same information regarding the two agenda items were also published in the Daily Herald on August 25th, 15 days prior to the opening of the public hearing. All interested parties are invited to present testimony for or against petition and cross-examine witnesses presenting testimony for and against petition. At this point, I will describe the public hearing proceedings of the Planning and Zoning Commission for those of you who are not familiar with the process. Each petitioner will first present supporting documents or exhibits for their record. Following the presentation of information, commission members will have the first opportunity to ask petitioner questions. After the initial questions by commission members, the public will have an opportunity to present evidence and testimony for or against petition to cross-examine the petitioner. Public participants may provide testimony either through written comments or by speaking at the meeting. All members of the public providing evidence and testimony are also subject to cross-examination by other members of the public and/or the commission. Members speaking during the public hearing agree that understand that everything they say will be sworn testimony affirmed to tell the whole truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Members of the public attending in person will have the first opportunity to provide new public testimony filed by the virtual audience. We'll see how that goes. If we have a lot of people on the virtual side, we may switch back and forth. We'll just see how it is when we get there. Members speaking during the public hearing -- oh, I'm sorry, I already said that. Using the sign-in sheet for tonight's meeting, we will call upon individuals in the order as they appear in the sign-in sheet. So hopefully, if you did sign that when you came in this evening. In the event then, all members of public having presented desired testimony during the allotted time of this evening's meeting, the public hearing may be continued at a future meeting. Members of the virtual audience who wish to speak will be asked to use the raise hand feature through the virtual meeting platform. Audience members will then be called upon unmuted and be given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address when is your turn to speak. If you speak multiple times, please state your name each time. If your comment has already been made or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from bearing off-topic and direct comments to the subject matter. After providing comment, virtual speakers will be muted once again. Please note that there may be a slight delay between becoming unmuted and being able to begin speaking. All comments will be recorded so that written transcriptions and minutes can be prepared at this meeting. Just a reminder that all speakers are asked to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Following the end of public testimony, a petitioner will have an opportunity to answer questions or respond to any comments made from members of the public. The public hearing may then be closed by the commission deliberation on request, followed by commission deliberation on the request. In order to help reduce background noise, I remind that all commissioners joining virtually -- there won't be any this evening, so we won't have to worry about that. Commissioners joining virtually, which we won't also have to worry about it because they don't have to identify themselves. So, with that, but I will say if people speaking here tonight just basically identify yourselves so people know virtually who's talking. So, that is the procedures that we've been following since COVID. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing done. Celeste, please call the roll.
Evans, Halloman, here. Metaskill?
Here.
Mead?
Mead, here.
Slifka?
Slifka, here.
Stocking?
Stocking, here.
Moran?
Moran, here.
Okay, get a form.
All right, thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, considering the amount of interest and energy that might be around item 5A, I would like to make a motion that we swap the 5A and 5B so that we can address that item which appears to be maybe a shorter item on tonight's agenda.
Stocking. Moved and seconded. So last call, roll, please.
Halloman?
Aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
All right, very good. So we'll take item 5B first and then go to 5A for the second item on the public hearing this evening. Next item is the approval of the minutes for the August 26, 2021 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve.
Mead, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we will now move on to the public hearing section of the agenda. Due to the last, the change we just made on the agenda order, we will take on 5B. It's the Dara Properties USA Transport Group, annexation zoning map amendment from the RR district to the I-1 district, comprehensive plan amendment from commercial mixed use to industrial special use, industrial at comma special use, and site plan review to allow the construction of a semi-truck repair facility. The location is northwest corner of Old Kirk Road and Reed Road, and the applicant is Ray Begu of Dara Properties. Any of the items on the record?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the contents of this file include an application for annexation, zoning map amendment, comprehensive plan amendment, special use, and site plan review filed by Rares Ray Begu of Dara Properties LLC dated November 12, 2020. This application includes the following items: project narrative, response to zoning map amendment standards, response to special use standards, site improvement plans, preliminary and final landscape plans, tree preservation plan, plot of annexation, plot of dedication, proof of ownership, legal description, a list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, and affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. The contents of this file also include application review comments dated January 8, 2021, May 13, 2021, and July 27, 2021. A copy of, also included is a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the application being filed, a certification of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August 25, 2021 for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the community development department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 9, 2021.
All right, thank you very much. So we'll hear from the applicant. Can I approach? Absolutely.
My name is Gus Apoptolopoulos. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Bejou with Dara Properties, who's our petitioner. Bejou, if you want to step up. We had some boards also. Do you know where we can place them?
Yeah, we, I think we have, they, we have easel somewhere in the building.
There should be one in there. Is there one in there? Maybe in there?
Just give us a second.
Sure.
To gather up some easels. Okay, sorry for that delay.
No, not a problem, thank you. If I can proceed?
Absolutely.
Present, I have Mr. Bejou, who is the owner of Dara Properties and the sister company USA Transport Group, Inc. Also, we have here today Mr. Alabastro from Chapel West, who's the general contractor, Mr. Rob Anderson from Spaceco, Inc., who is the engineer, and Mr. Fred Norris, who is with Norris Architects. As you're aware, we're asking that the northwest corner of Reed Road and Old Kirk Road, which consists of approximately 2.9 acres of unimproved land, is the property that we're asking to be annexed today. My client operates a small truck repair facility, and he, for, under USA Transport Group, Inc., which is the sister company of Dara Properties. His company has a fleet of 56 semi-trucks, and we are requesting to build on this project a repair facility to be able to repair and maintain the fleet of trucks that he has. He transports goods throughout the United States, and his current location, he has outgrown, so, which is why we're looking to build our project here in this location. We're planning on building a 10,900 square foot industrial building on the site consisting of 1,800 square foot office space and a 9,000 square foot garage space, which has eight drive-through bays, no pits, and one simple bay dock. US Transport will also be using the office space for its corporate headquarters, and will be maintaining and servicing only its trucks and semi-trailers, not for the public. They anticipate servicing approximately 10 to 15 vehicles at the time. The rest of the fleet would be on the road. The bay provides four, eight vehicles possibly being worked on at the same time, so there's more than enough room in the building and on the parking lot to maintain the vehicles. We also are going to be asking for a special use with respects to the parking. The local code calls for 54 parking spaces, nine spaces based on the office square footage, and 45 spaces based on the garage square footage. We are planning on providing existing nine spaces striped for parking and requesting that we land bank the remaining 45 spaces for future use if necessary. By allowing us to land bank the spaces, this will allow us to be able to maneuver the vehicles, the trucks, and the trailers a lot much simpler around the parking lot without having to maneuver around the landscaping and the medians that would be required. In addition, we only believe we'll be employing about four to five employees, so the existing parking spaces would be enough for those employees. Everything that we've provided, we've put into those binders, and we've blown up the site plan here and the plans for the illumination of the building. You want me to pull those back so everybody can see?
I'm good, thanks.
So that's an overall picture. Do you have any specific questions, or do you want me to have any testimony from my client with respects to his business?
I think he's been before us a couple of times.
Been before, correct, yeah.
So we're familiar with his business and him as well, so, I mean, certainly can offer anything he wishes to the commission, that's fine.
I think he's eager to start the project and start building his facility, so he has something in place to maintain his tractor trailers.
Do you want any of your other consultants to provide any testimony at this time?
I don't think we need anything unless you have some specific questions, and they'll be here to answer those questions for you.
Okay, all right. Any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Apoptolopoulos, a couple of questions regarding the land banking.
Okay.
So my understanding is that the lot will be constructed all of asphalt, but what you're merely asking for is that you will not stripe it or landscape it.
Correct.
So that encompasses land banking for the purpose of future parking.
Correct.
There is a right for the city to require the development of parking later on if it's ever deemed that it's needed. Is that an all or nothing thing, like the rest of the lot would be done? I guess this is a question for city staff, or is that, or can that be done piecemeal as and when the demand for parking is noted?
I think it would depend on the use that could potentially replace this business if it were to ever leave. So, you know, if they only need an additional 10 spaces based on the parking requirement of the code, then they would need to add the 10, so it just depends.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
If we're not currently speaking, can we turn off our microphones? We're just getting some feedback. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, Adam.
A few questions, and this might be something for city staff. There's a couple of comments in the WBK Engineering that Greg Chismark had brought up in regards to the stormwater it mentioned, including provisions to prevent clogging and facilitate maintenance of the control structure orifice, and then also a backup SSA shall be created to provide funding for maintenance of the stormwater basin and outlet should the function of the basin require city intervention. Is that something that we would include if we were to prove it, that we would have those conditions included in that, or?
It's not necessary. The requirement for the backup special service area is a Kane County stormwater ordinance requirement, so it's not necessary to make that a condition we have in the past, but it's a code requirement. And likewise, any other concerns will be subject to final engineering approval. We wouldn't issue building permits until those are addressed.
Yes, Tim. I had a question. So, are you going to be repairing both the tractors and the trailers at this facility?
That's what we're planning, yes.
And the facility is, the bays are big enough for the entire trailer to go inside to be worked on? It won't be done outside at all?
Correct.
Thank you.
And they're pull-through bays, so they can come in and pull right in and right out.
Thank you.
Anything else? Michael?
I just wanted to verify again, it's only your trucks? You're not going to be for hire or anything, where people can come in and use yours?
No, it's going to be our own fleet only.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you, I know you have a busy day for interview, so thanks.
Yep. Okay, anyone wishing to give public testimony on this? Sir, just please leave them up in case somebody wants to reference them. I don't know if any of the public wants to, might want to turn that other way around, so.
Rotate it.
Rotate it.
It's upside down right now.
Yeah. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so anyone in the public here wishing to testify on this public hearing item? Anyone? Anyone on the list? Okay, everyone on the list has indicated 5A is what they're going to testify on. Anyone, so there's no one here in City Hall that wishes to testify on this application? I'll ask people now virtually, if anyone is attending virtually and wants to testify on this agenda item 5A, or 5B, I'm sorry, Dara Properties, US Transport Group, please use the raise hand function on your application so you can be recognized. And we're not seeing anyone, so I'll ask one more time. Anyone wishing to provide public testimony on public hearing item 5B on Dara Properties, USA Transport Group, please use the raise hand feature on the application so you can be recognized to speak on this matter. Okay, so we have not received anybody from outside, so. I think we've seen this a couple of times, so it's gone through preliminary review, so I'm familiar. Tim, probably not, because you weren't here for some of the preliminaries, but you read everything, so, but yeah, we've seen this. This has been going on for a little bit, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Moved and seconded. Celeste, please call the roll.
Halloman? Halloman, aye. Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
As a point of discussion, as we enter into the discussion phase, I just think that the nature of this tenant is consistent with the surrounding uses as well as the undeveloped, the anticipated uses and the undeveloped properties, so I find this unacceptable.
Yeah, it's a very good location for this.
Right. Point of order for staff, we're not recommending annexation, so that's not part of this. The motions two through five, we have a site plan review, we've reviewed that, that's not something we vote on either, right? Or it is, okay. All right, so I have four motions.
It's the zoning upon annexation that the commission makes a recommendation on, but not the annexation itself, and then, yes, the site plan review you make a recommendation on as well.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a comprehensive plan amendment from commercial mixed use to industrial upon annexation of the property located at the northwest corner of Old Kirk Road and Reed Road, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Moran, second, set motion. Moved and seconded. Celeste?
Halloman? Halloman, aye. Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
And Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a zoning map amendment upon annexation from RR Rural Residential to I-1 Light Industrial for the property located at the northwest corner of Old Kirk Road and Reed Road, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Slifka, second.
Moved and seconded. Celeste, please call the roll.
Okay, Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of a special use for the land banking of 45 parking spaces for the property located at the northwest corner of Old Kirk Road and Reed Road, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Metaskill, second.
Moved and seconded. Celeste?
Okay. Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the site plan, subject to the finding of fact contained in the staff report, for the property located at the northwest corner of Old Kirk Road and Reed Road.
Second, Slifka. Moved and seconded, Celeste.
Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
All right, so, very good, so when does this go into?
So these recommendations will go to city council for consideration on Monday, September 20th, same time and place.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Well done. Good motion. All right, so we'll move on to the second public hearing for this evening. It's public hearing 5A. It's for Geneva Farms North. It's for the annexation zoning map amendment from the RR district to the I-1 district, preliminary and final planned unit approval, PUD approval, preliminary and final plot of subdivision and site plan review to allow the construction of a warehouse distribution center. The location is the southeast corner of Division Street and Kirk Road, and the application is CHI Acquisitions LP. Jake, do you have things you want to read into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the contents of this file include an application for annexation zoning map amendment, preliminary and final planned unit development, preliminary and final plot of subdivision and site plan review filed by CHI Acquisitions LP dated June 25, 2021, including the following items: project narrative, plot of annexation, annexation and rezoning petition, preliminary and final PUD plan, preliminary and final landscape plan, tree report and preservation plan, land use opinion application, list of variations, PUD standard requests, exterior building elevations, stormwater permit application, preliminary stormwater management report, site improvement plans, Kane County road impact fee application, traffic impact study, revisions to traffic impact study dated September 8, 2021, physical impact study, Kirk Road cross-section, tree preservation overlay, fire access plan, snow stacking exhibit, engineer's estimate of probable costs for the site public improvements, engineering's estimated, estimate, estimate, engineers estimate of probable costs for the roadway public improvements, conduit exhibit, plot of subdivision, roadway improvement plans for Geneva Drive, plot of subdivision, roadway improvement plans for Geneva Drive, Geneva Drive asphalt calculations, response to standards for zoning map amendments and PUD slash special use, developer's disclosure of identity, owner's consent, owner's disclosure of identity, proof of ownership, legal description, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. The contents of this file also include application review comments dated July 29, 2021, and August 24, 2021, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August 25, 2021 for tonight's public hearing. a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within five hundred feet, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and then submitted public comments regarding this agenda item for this evening. And then, Mr. Chair, if I could also mention that, um, we do have, um, a few corrections to the staff report for the findings of fact that we just want to touch on real quick. Uh, the first is regarding standard two of the zoning map amendment. Um, in that portion, we talk about, uh, the potential use for that land if it is not rezoned. Upon annexation, uh, newly annexed land has automatic designation of rural residential, single-family. We stated that it could have one single-family home per lot, um, of the, the site that's proposed for development, uh, but we did want to mention that it could be subdivided as well, so there could potentially be additional single-family homes, um, you know, placed on that site.
Clarification on that.
And then, uh, the second item is regarding, uh, the parking for the proposed warehouse development. The use, the proposed use based on square footage actually requires two hundred and forty-three passenger parking spaces, which is a surplus of ninety-three. Uh, the city actually does not require, uh, truck parking spaces, uh, for the use, and that applies specifically to standard three and seven, and the PUD, um, response, the standard response.
Okay. That's so much, that's the corrections?
Those are all the corrections.
All right. All right, very good. All right, so after the extensive record and some corrections, we'll hear from the applicant.
Chairman, Stocking and, uh, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, my name is Peter Bezos, I'm an attorney in Elgin, Illinois. I'm here this evening, uh, representing the petitioner, CHI Acquisitions LLP, which is an affiliate of Crow Holdings Industrial, a national developer of industrial office and multifamily projects with a regional office here in Chicago. Here with me this evening are Matt Cruz, Managing Director of Crow Industrial, and his project assistant, Jack Raben, Sarah Disney Hoff, Director of, of Traffic Engineering with Sam Schwartz, Lee Ovington, a certified real estate appraiser, Renee Hanlon, a land use planner with certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners, and Jason Sebulski, a professional civil engineer with the engineering firm of Jacob &amp; Heffner. I'm gonna give you a very brief introduction to the, uh, legal request and the petition, and then I'm gonna ask our team members to briefly address, uh, various specific topics which, um, which are, um, pertain to the standards for approval. Uh, as the staff has, uh, very thoroughly reported, uh, in the petition, the land involves an approximate fifty-four acre site along the east side of Kirk Road, uh, on the, at its south intersection with Division Street. The land is in unincorporated Kane County, Illinois, and is currently being farmed. Um, the petition contains the requests that the, uh, city annex the property pursuant to an annexation agreement. Uh, annexation is of course not, uh, the subject of tonight's public hearing and is exclusively within the purview of the city. But, uh, before you tonight is our request that upon annexation, that the city approve a map amendment or a rezoning from the property, uh, for the property that would change it from its automatic, uh, RR rural, single-family residential classification to I-1 industrial. Uh, we're also asking that you, uh, recommend approval of a special use for preliminary and final planned unit development to allow the site to be developed for a warehouse and distribution center, uh, with relatively minimal departures, and those, those departures are called out um, on page two of the staff report under the caption, "Requests," uh, three A through F. Also, we're requesting that you approve a preliminary, final, preliminary and final, final plot of subdivision, creating a two-lot subdivision with the north lot, as you will see on, uh, on the projector here, being where the building will be developed, and the south lot being, uh, the detention, the lot in which the detention basin will be located, and dividing those two lots would be an extension of Geneva Drive, extending it westerly through the, the fifty-four acre site, so as to intersect with Kirk Road opposite the current intersection of, um, the west leg of Geneva Drive, and the developer will be paying for and installing a four-way, uh, traffic signal at that intersection. Uh, the property to the immediate north is in the corporate limits of the city of St. Charles. Uh, the site before you tonight, our proposal, is in, uh, your planning jurisdiction, and has since two thousand and three been designated in your comprehensive plan as light industrial office research. The comprehensive plan also calls for the extension of Geneva Drive, which I just mentioned, uh, we're proposing to do. As you'll hear from others during our presentation, the proposed use will meet all of the city's standards for the requested rezoning and planned unit development, and is consistent with your comprehensive plan. You'll also hear tonight that the project is very well screened and landscaped, especially along Kirk Road. Um, I would now like to introduce, uh, the, I would now like to ask our, the other members of our team to address you, and we're gonna try and be as brief as possible. First, Matt Cruz of Crow will address you, then our traffic consultant, then our appraiser, our land use consultant, our civil engineer, and then if the chair will allow me, I'll make a very, very brief summation, and we'll sit down. Mr. Cruz?
Thank you for having me. My name is Matt Cruz. I lead the Midwest Office for Crow Holdings Industrial. As Peter mentioned, here are the listed names of everyone we anticipate in speaking tonight. I'll keep this short, but Crow Holdings is, one of the, the Crow family out of Dallas, Texas, is one of the legacy, most reputable real estate development families that this country's ever had. With a seventy-year history, we've built everything from multifamily, industrial office, retail properties throughout the country. Crow Holdings Industrial, the family really got back into ground-up warehouse and distribution center construction in two thousand thirteen. Since that time, we've delivered roughly thirty-seven million feet of Class A institutional quality space that would be purchased and owned by pension funds and, uh, other institutional investors at a total market value of roughly three and a half billion dollars. We build on a speculative basis, a build-to-suit basis, where we have a particular user that asks us to build them a building. In this case, our role is as a fee developer for the eventual owner and occupier of this building. Here are a few examples. I opened the office here at beginning of twenty eighteen, and so in three and a half years, we've now done fourteen spec buildings, roughly three million feet, and are actively doing three to four projects a year, including this fee development project here in Geneva. Ultimately, what does this all mean to the city, its residents? At the end of the day, what type of fiscal impact does a facility like this in town provide? Roughly five hundred jobs, fifteen dollars an hour type positions, full benefits, two hundred fifty construction jobs for nearly the twelve-month construction period. This building will be almost double the construction cost of a standard light industrial distribution building that I would build on spec, for instance. We estimate that the total tax benefit to the community and the school district, which is the most important part, is roughly six hundred thousand dollars a year. Kim Lee Horn, uh, is a reputable civil engineer, provided a sound study, knowing that that would be of concern to residents and the city alike. I know the graphics a little challenging to read, but in the bottom right-hand corner, you see the white box is the, the facility itself. You can see Kirk Road highlighted there. The red noise is roughly the, the sound of a vacuum. If you ran a vacuum in your house, say eighty decibels, that stays within the confines of the site itself. There's an eight-foot tall landscape berm running the entire north-south length of Kirk Road. City ordinance requires decibels to be at sixty-five during the day and sixty at night or below. Our project at its peak will deliver fifty to fifty-three decibels, or the sound of an air conditioner, to put it in more relatable terms. Site plan, uh, it may be tough to see here, but effectively what you've got is, is the extension of Geneva Drive, which will extend from Kirk through to Geneva, or through to Couch Road. You've got a big employee car parking lot, a number of, of truck docks for loading, and some truck parking. And I've got a short video, uh, the video can explain and show everybody more than any words I'll ever be able to use, so let me play that for everybody now. I think I've got this thing back on, on point here, so with that, I'll introduce our traffic consultant, our consultant, Sarah Disney Hoffey, uh, Sam Schwartz, sorry?
Thanks, Matt.
Next slide, and back.
Perfect.
Good.
Good evening. Um, I'll in, briefly introduce myself. Again, my name is Sarah Disney Hoffey. I'm the Director of Traffic Engineering with Sam Schwartz, and we did the traffic impact analysis for this project, so I'll give you a brief overview of the work that we did and the findings of our evaluation. For those on the, uh, virtual meeting and in the audience who may not be familiar with a traffic study, the building blocks of a study of this nature typically involve looking at existing traffic and how it operates today, considering additional growth in the area, both due to regional growth and other developments that other parties will be building in the vicinity, and then finally estimating the amount of traffic that this project will generate and adding that to the total, doing an analysis of future traffic operation and determining what is needed to promote safe and efficient traffic operation within the area and to meet the jurisdictional standards. In this case, the standards both of the city of Geneva and the Kane County Division of Transportation. The road that would be used by the majority of site traffic, both cars and trucks, is Kirk Road. Kirk Road belongs to Kane County and is designated as a county freeway because of its use for regional mobility. During the morning rush hour, the quantity of traffic on Kirk Road is about twenty-three hundred vehicles, and during the evening peak hour, it's about thirty-one hundred. Traffic engineering studies commonly look at these two peak hours of the day because it's when the traffic at intersections is highest, and if you're evaluating according to that volume of traffic, you are then generally able to accommodate the traffic during off-peak periods when the traffic is lower. So if we look at how this particular development is expected to change that volume of traffic on Kirk Road, um, with traffic heading to the north and south as a split from this location, uh, the incremental addition on Kirk Road would be, uh, a projected sixty vehicles in the morning peak hour, that's about two-point-six percent of that existing volume, and then in the evening, forty-five vehicles, or about one-point-four percent of that amount of traffic that's currently on Kirk Road. Now, the other streets in the area that would be expected that, uh, to be utilized by site traffic in a lower quantity than Kirk include Couch Road to the east. Um, as Mr. Bezos mentioned, there will be a connection with the extension of Geneva Drive to the east so that cars and trucks from this development can utilize that corridor, and then a, we, um, projected, um, to consider that a small amount of car traffic may use Geneva Drive for those who have relatively local residences connecting to this new source of employment. It is notable that currently Geneva Drive is posted with a six-ton weight restriction to restrict use of that street west of Kirk Road by truck traffic. So with that sum of all of the different sources of traffic that we considered, we did a study in accordance with KDOT criteria, and that necessitates that we look out twenty years into the future to evaluate how traffic would operate, and based on that evaluation, we identified recommendations to achieve what we call Level of Service D or better, and that is within the industry acceptable standard for how traffic would operate during those peak hours, as I said, when intersection traffic is typically highest. And so to give a brief summary of what those improvements are, um, there is a recommendation out of our study to add a new traffic signal at the intersection of Kirk Road and Geneva Drive that would be interconnected to existing signals to the north at Division and to the south at Avril to promote smooth traffic flow along that Kirk Road corridor. There would be turn lanes added on Kirk Road and on the new leg of Geneva Drive to facilitate turns onto and off of that new approach, and then the segment of Geneva Drive extended across the site frontage would provide what we call a three-lane cross-section, one travel lane in each direction, and then in the middle, a left turn lane to accommodate turning traffic into the proposed site driveways. So to wrap up, I'll briefly, um, reference the standards for map amendments for the city as it relates to the work that we did. Based on our evaluation, as I said, we expect that future traffic operation with these improvements would meet industry standard, therefore not unduly increasing traffic or congestion or on-street parking. And then, um, because we forecast acceptable levels of service at the proposed access locations, uh, we believe that the ingress and egress is sufficient to accommodate the traffic generated by this development. And at the conclusion of the presentation, I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
I'd like our appraiser, Mr. Lee Ovington, to address you next.
Good evening, board members. Uh, my name's Lee Ovington. I'm a real estate appraiser. Um, just really quickly, I'll give you a brief description of my background and experience. I've been a real estate appraiser for thirty-five years. I hold two of the top designations in appraising, both the MAI designation and the SRA designation. Those are through the Appraisal Institute. Uh, those are regarded as the pinnacle of the industry. In addition to that, I am also a qualified expert witness in the Sixteenth Judicial Circuit Court, and I'm an IDOT-approved appraiser. My, um, objective in doing my appraisal work was to study and research and analyze to determine if the proposed development would impact property values, in particular, the value of nearby residential properties. The, 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 um, the technique that I use is a acceptable and, uh, industry-standard technique in appraising called a paired analysis. Basically, a paired analysis is a, uh, a method by which we isolate, isolate out a single variable and, um, between two sales, and then that single variable would show any difference between the two sales. In this case, the variable that I isolated was, is there any value impact of the view across Kirk Road from the residential properties on the west side of Kirk Road to the, to the properties on the east side of Kirk Road? I conducted, uh, five case studies in this research. Uh, case studies one and two were in the Chesapeake Commons. These, uh, uh, were, are directly across the street from the proposed site. The, uh, the methodology was to compare a sale of a property The methodology was to compare a sale of a property there adjacent to Kirk Road with a view across to interior sites that would not have that view. Along with that same location was a second case study of a property in the same subdivision. What I found in this case study was there was not any observable impact of the view across Kirk Road of the vacant land when compared to an interior site. The third study, which is of particular importance, is to the north in St. Charles. It's a detached, single-family home in the Cambridge East subdivision. This property actually has a view directly across Kirk Road of commercial properties somewhat similar to the proposed development. And in this study, I also found that the sale price of both the property with the view across Kirk Road was not notably or observably different from the sale price of an interior site. The fourth study was, again, to the south of, in the Geneva East development. This is, again, is a location that would, at present, view directly across Kirk Road or the proposed site. I looked at three different properties, all with views to the east, and compared those with sales of interior properties that would not share the same view. And again, the data and the analysis showed that there was no observable difference in sale prices between the properties viewing a view across Kirk Road with those properties with interiors locations. And then the last case study was to the south, and this was a townhome development in Kirkwood. This townhome development is of particular interest because this townhome development is directly across the street from commercial-use properties. I looked at two sales that have a view directly across Kirk Road of those commercial properties, compared them to very similar sales with interior locations, and found no observable difference in the values or sale prices of those properties that have a direct view of the commercial. So in summary, it was my conclusion that the view of either commercial property or industrial property of those properties that are along Kirk Road, that those views would not negatively impact the values of those properties. And to summarize, this meets the standard two for the special use permit in the standards. I want to thank you.
Thanks, Lee. We'd like our land use planner, Ms. Renee Hanlon, to now address you.
My name is Renee Hanlon, and as Mr. Bezos said, I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I have 20 years of public and private planning experience in the far west suburbs. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about zoning and land use. So just to reiterate, the request is to rezon the property upon annexation to the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District and for special use for planned unit development. If the rezoning and the PUD is approved, then the property would be developed with a light industrial building. The construction type is the precast concrete panels. And when you, as you guys well know, when you're looking at making a change to zoning, there's standards that you look at, and there's factors that you consider. So the first factor that you consider when making these land use decisions is what is the trend of development in the area? So over the last couple of decades, Kirk Road has developed in a very distinct trend, a very distinct way. On the west side of the road, it's developed as residential, and on the east side of the road, there's been development of light industrial and commercial uses. So the trend of development in the area definitely is consistent with what's being requested here. The property's on the east side of the road and would continue that light industrial development. As far as the zoning or the compatibility with properties in the immediate area, the property to the north is in the jurisdiction of the City of St. Charles, and it's zoned M2, light manufacturing, which is very similar to the I-1 zoning district with the City of Geneva. That property has been developed with a light industrial use and is planned for further development in that same pattern. The property to the east and to the south of the subject property is unincorporated Kane County. It still has the original F zoning, but the future land use plan, the 2040 Plan for Kane County, shows that property along with the property in question as being slated for commercial or industrial development that supports increasing the job base for the county. So the county plan supports the development of this property into light industrial. The property further south is zoned in the City of Geneva in the I-1 zoning district and is improved with similar-type uses. The property that's east but along the southern border of the property is also in the City of Geneva. It's zoned I-1 as well and is improved with light industrial also. The property west, as has been pointed out before, is an established residential neighborhood. It has the R zoning and is established, single-family residential. So we have to look at the compatibility of what's being proposed here to that existing residential. And there is compatibility in that Kirk Road provides a great boundary or buffer between the two land uses. Kirk Road is a very wide public right-of-way, so there's a wide separation between the land uses. Kirk Road has been developed with landscaping along the west side of the road. That's mature at this point. The development proposal is to construct an eight-foot landscape berm along the frontage of the entire parcel, so that will continue the dense landscaping along Kirk Road and will soften that boundary between the land uses. So in conclusion, the plans for the future of this area, the trend of development in this area, and the existing land uses in this area are all consistent and compatible with what's being proposed here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Our last expert witness before I give you a quick summation is Mr. Jason Sebolski, our civil engineer.
Thank you. My name is Jason Sebolski. I'm a project engineer at Jacob &amp; Hefner Associates, as well as a professional civil engineer and a resident at 1442 Joshua Court, and happy to live in Geneva for the past 25 years, including being a graduate of the 2007 Geneva High School. So as my role as a civil engineer on this project and this team is to take care of the design of the project for the parking lot, the utilities, the stormwater management, the drainage of the project, and all those civil engineering items. So I would happy to take questions from you guys when time is ready and for the public, but I'm up here to give my testament that this site has adequate utilities, drainage, stormwater, and parking for the site, and that providing these for the site will not adversely affect nearby properties. So, thank you very much.
So commissioners, the testimony you've heard tonight demonstrates, I hope to you, that all of the city's standards for the actions requested, map amendment plus a special use for PUD have been met. We have submitted how our project meets those standards, but just very quickly, it is consistent with land uses to the north and south, as Ms. Hanlon has testified. It's consistent with the trend of development. It is, excuse me a minute, it is consistent with your comprehensive plan. As our appraiser testified, it will not have a negative impact on nearby property values. As our engineer has testified, the proposed use will not unduly increase traffic congestion and will be adequately served by the roadways as they will be improved by our developer. The, excuse me, the development, as testified by our land use planner, it will not negatively impact the further development in the area. And to that point, you know how we're going to extend Geneva Drive, if this project is approved, through to Kirk Road? Well, immediately to the east where Geneva Drive already exists in its intersection with Calts Road. North of that is the so-called Weber Farm, and I happen to be involved and have been in conversations with your staff. We're soon going to be filing a petition by another light industrial developer to annex the Weber Farm to the City of Geneva and have a light industrial project. So your comprehensive plan is truly coming to fruition. And I think the civil engineer has testified that the parcel, as improved, will incorporate adequate drainage, parking, and other necessary facilities, and it will comply with all of your city codes. And as Mr. Cruz pointed out to you when he showed you the building, the architecture, appeal, and function of the building is consistent with other nearby commercial-industrial properties and will not bring down the value of such properties, of nearby properties because of the architecture. It will frankly enhance it. With that, thank you so much. I hope we didn't take too much of your time and we're available to answer your questions.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any questions from the commissioners at this time? Yes, Rebecca?
Is it possible for us to know the developer, but the business that's going to be, who's hired you to?
Certainly a question to ask, yeah.
I'm just wondering what type of industry the end user will be, shifts, you know, related to like shift work and all those things.
So happy to address it in the best way that I can. We're bound by confidentiality where I can't reveal the exact company who would occupy this building. I can tell you it's a Fortune 100 business that is very prominent in our day-to-day lives.
Okay.
I wish I could tell you more, I just I'm bound by confidentiality.
So you can't give us any indication about even just the type of industry it is?
Unfortunately, I can't.
Okay.
Will there be any manufacturing on-site?
There will not be manufacturing.
It's just a shipping facility?
It's sorting and distributing.
Okay. John, go ahead.
I saw the sound guy. I don't recall any lighting exhibit. It's part of the commercial lighting.
Your mic, please, John.
No, I'm sorry.
It's easy to forget. Do we have a lighting exhibit that would explain the lumens and where they're at at different points on the site?
We have, we do not have a lighting plan with us at this point in time, but a lighting study will be done that will be in conformance with the lighting codes.
Can you speak to that? Well, I mean, I think our lighting standards are that they're essentially zero at the lot lines.
Zero at the lot lines, right. So there's no glare that will be going off this property, whether it's the parking lot, and that's including actually the Geneva Drive as well. So it's not just going out to Kirk Road and across the residence, it's going down to Geneva Drive as well. So the lighting will be full compliance with the code. It will have zero lumens at the lot lines.
Can you speak to the type of lights? Something, you can have lights that portray outward, but you can also have downlights that provide lighting of traffic patterns.
Yes, yes.
Do you happen to know what would be used here?
From my, that's a bit more of an architectural thing.
Right.
But from what I've done in previous projects, what we typically see is downward-facing lights in the parking lot area, and they may have, they will have lights on the building that will shine down, and those are slightly angled to give dock lighting, but those are not near any of the property lines and will not give glare towards the residence or the property lines.
Okay.
I can speak further to that. So when I first started in the warehouse development business in 2005, we used an entirely different lighting technology altogether. A lot of that was high-pressure sodium lights, the big orange lights that we all remember. All of that's LED today. Users used to face those things out at 45-degree angles or oftentimes worse, shining straight out from the building that looked like a spaceship. All of that stuff now is shining straight down.
Okay.
So we end up with more light fixtures, light poles on-site in a more controlled fashion.
So there'll be more directed lights and directed downwards is what we can expect if this is approved?
Correct.
Okay. Can someone expound a little bit on, there was a couple comments in the staff report about the departure, the vegetation departure from code at the retention pond, and I desire to have it more prairie-like or whatever. Can someone just speak to what you're varying and why you're doing that?
Yes, yeah. So we're responsible for the detention design, and our design is more of a wetland-style planting-type pond with a deeper pocket in the middle. It's been researched and studied that these ponds are more efficient and more beneficial to the area rather than the old traditional ponds that so many ponds were built where they were dry detention basins. These wet bottom detention basins are becoming more prevalent and more researched.
Okay. Thank you. I think for that clarification. Let's go to the tree preservation plan. It's a pretty thick plan. I think, can I summarize it essentially? You might as well just stay up there for a while. Essentially, there's going to be 18 trees removed primarily along the Division Street right-of-way. I mean, the site is essentially farmland, so there's very little to deal with there. But then you're going to add significant landscaping, it appears, along particularly the west boundary line on top of an eight-foot berm, correct?
Correct. So we are internally meeting the landscape ordinance, providing the trees required for the site, both north and south, but we are then going an extra layer on top of that by adding a separate count of trees that is along the landscape berm to provide additional screening.
Okay, and I see a nice mix of trees, some evergreens, some junipers, some maple, some oak, and the like. It's not your intention to completely hide this building from the view of the residences, but it's to provide a buffer that both insulates it particularly from viewing the docks and the lighted parking lot. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the way I looked at the plan, it looks like it's continuous landscaping in essence. There's very few gaps, but it's just varying types of shrubs.
Yeah, but just to give the tree the proper space, you obviously will see when they're planted, they're not touching, but as they grow and over time and the lifetime of this project, they'll get closer.
And I appreciate the sightline you gave, because that gives someone an idea that you're going to see the top half of the building, but you're going to be shielded from the operating bottom half, essentially.
Correct.
The signaled intersection, it's hard to imagine, and I'm going into traffic, it's hard to imagine that this property would make sense, given the volume we anticipate, without signaling the intersection. So what is the status of obtaining a signal? What have your conversations been with KDOT in order to procure this? And do you anticipate that this might be a requirement of the approval to have a signaled intersection?
Sure. So the standards that are referenced when considering if a new traffic signal can go into place are federal standards. They're in a manual called the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and there are very specific volume criteria for putting a new traffic signal in. In this case, as I mentioned previously, Kirk Road is designated as a county freeway by KDOT. It is also designated by our Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization as a strategic regional arterial route, and SRA for short. And throughout the region, SRA routes are subject to an even higher bar for meeting that minimum that minimum traffic volume criteria to put a new signal in because those routes are intended to offer a high rate of mobility
Right.
through the region. And adding signals means more stops.
Correct.
So, there was a high bar to evaluate. So, we looked at all the different sources that would add traffic to this intersection at Kirk and Geneva. With the extension of Geneva Drive from Couts to Kirk, we expect that some drivers who are on Couts may choose to divert over to Kirk because it does offer that improved mobility. There are existing uses or planned uses that are on Geneva Drive itself that would likely take advantage of that connection. And then we assume that some of the traffic that's currently on the west side of Geneva Drive, west of Kirk Road, may choose to connect over to Couts or, and cut through in this manner. And so, all of those things combined with this development, we added them up, looked at the hourly traffic for 14 hours on a standard week day. We had to, for eight of those hours minimum, meet that minimum volume criteria. And we didn't know how this assessment was going to turn out, but we found that it did meet that very stringent standard. We've submitted it to KDOT. They have reviewed our evaluation. They have not commented one way or another on that criteria implying acceptance. They've given us review comments simply asking for an additional turn lane on the new leg of Geneva Drive and asking some clarifying questions. So, it's our expectation that will be approved by KDOT and ultimately the county board.
As submitted, it's not a requirement at this point, is that correct? The owner-operator, what would, do you happen to know what their view might be as to whether or not, if they had a signal, how they would view this site versus not getting a signal?
Would you like to speak to that?
I would speak to that. They will not locate here without a signal. It's that black and white.
Okay, thank you. Geneva Road, I went down Geneva Road from Couts Road yesterday.
That's fine, is it?
And what's interesting in that, and I wasn't aware of the load limit, but there were 10 or 12 semi-trucks parked, either parked or idling, on both sides of the road, essentially pinching the roadway off. So, that is something that is certainly not that you as landowners or your owner-operators issue, but as a city, there might be some consideration as to requiring parking only on one side or something so that there can be free traffic flow. Because if there is a source of traffic from the west or getting to the west from, past there, there will be some pinch points that will be difficult for trucks to get through.
I believe it is posted now, but you have one.
Posted parking.
Yes. You have one establishment there, so it hasn't been strictly enforced.
Right.
They've enjoyed the benefit of having that street to themselves. We have had conversations with them, not only with this project, but with past proposals
Okay.
that that will need to come to an end when other establishments locate on Geneva Drive. So, they have about two and a half acres on the west end of their property where they plan to improve that to stage their vehicles instead of using Geneva Drive.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think, like Commissioner Mead, I think I have a question for everybody if I might. Ms. Disney-Hoffe, as long as we're on the traffic subject, this is sort of an observation, but it's my understanding that the traffic study is not taken at face value. We run it past a city third-party objective traffic study to verify the findings and recommendations, if I'm correct?
That is correct. And that gentleman, Mr. Matt Baldwin, is joining us virtually tonight if we do have any questions for him.
And in the presentation, the video presentation, you used the number, the term "vehicles", but you didn't really segregate whether those are cars or trucks. Is that a combination of the two in terms of the increase in traffic?
Oh, in the presentation, yes. It was a combination of cars and trucks.
Okay.
Yes.
And the video showed almost exclusively tractor trailers, I suppose the big 53-foot trailers. But will this operation also have box trucks, smaller vans? The longer ones tend to go on longer journeys, the shorter ones make local drops and stops?
Yeah. Do you want to answer?
I can answer that. This facility, which is one of several in this owner-occupiers' facility types, if you will, is primarily 53-footers, not box trucks or vans.
And then I had a question for Mr. Ovington with regard to the paired analysis. And the variable that you indicated you accounted for was the view. My question is, has a study been done in terms of the effect, if any, on property values due to increased truck traffic?
That wasn't part of my study. There's already a substantial amount of traffic on Kirk, so that would already be embodied within my analysis. I didn't do any further studying about how truck traffic. My focus of the study was to look at especially those properties that would be directly impacted because they have a view of the development versus the interior properties that can't see the development. But I did not conduct any studies about a traffic, or truck traffic influence.
Okay. Thank you. With regard to the building itself, the environmental issues, is LEED certification part of this type of development?
LEED certification is not required in this case, but in Chicago, just by the very nature of where our inputs come from, we usually meet base-level LEED certification. I've built a number of LEED-certified, LEED-silver facilities in my career. In this case, the client is not requiring that.
And can I ask, is this going to be a cold storage facility? Is this climate-controlled?
It will not be a cold storage facility. So, similar to lineage logistics to the east on Geneva Drive, it will not be like that.
Okay. And then my last question had to do with the financing of the project. You're not seeking to create a TIF district?
No.
It's not an enterprise zone or anything like that?
Nope, none of that. No incentives requested here.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Commissioner, I can supplement the question you asked, Mr. Ovington, about did you analyze truck traffic? And he said, no, he didn't. I just reconfirmed with Ms. Disney-Hoffe that she testified that the increased traffic volume on Kirk Road during peak hours of both trucks and passenger cars was between 1.4 and 2.6%. If that helps you. And as long as I'm up here, I would like to hand to Chayton True, if I may, copies of Mr. Ovington's report and copies of Renee Hanlon's land use report.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
No, that's all I had. Thank you. Thanks.
Yes, Rebecca?
Maybe just a point of clarification. So, from what I'm remembering, there is a light at Division and Kirk, right? So, what is the length between those two lights? And is that, that seems like a lot to stop and then stop and then, with the flow of traffic, with the requirement that you were talking about with the...
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That actually touches on another aspect of those stringent requirements for SRA routes. The minimum spacing between signals needs to be at least a quarter-mile, and those two streets are about 1,300 feet apart, which is roughly a quarter-mile. And so, it would meet KDOT standards for signal spacing on this highly mobile corridor.
Okay.
Oh, yes, thank you. And as I was just reminded to reiterate, there would be an interconnected system between those signals to facilitate green lights as you're moving down the corridor rather than more of a popcorn system of red lights going on.
And also with the light at, is it Avril?
Yes.
As well?
Correct. Interconnection in both directions.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, as long as we're on traffic. As long as we're on it. Just one quick follow-up question. So, you said the signal is not required, it's not required for this project, that the intersection isn't required to have a signal to perform adequately. Is that...
I would not agree with that, no. In fact, as is documented in our traffic study, currently Geneva Drive, under its unsignalized condition, operates at what we call Level of Service F, which is a failing condition, as it sounds. Now, that's not uncommon when you have a stop-controlled side street with a very busy corridor like Kirk Road. But it can take a long time to make a turn from Geneva onto Kirk. And so, with the added traffic and because the traffic volume would meet those criteria I was speaking to earlier, not only can a signal be installed, but a signal should be installed for safe movement of traffic at that location.
But it's not an actual requirement at this point of this...
It's part of our proposal, that it's part of our PUD that the street be, Geneva Street be extended to Kirk and that that intersection be signalized. So, and Mr. Cruz testified that our client, our user, won't do this project without it. So, we would have no objection if you made that a condition to the PUD because that's what we intend.
Ultimately, the road, Kirk Road, is under the jurisdiction of KDOT in Kane County. So, does it, I'm just asking the question, does it fall under the city's purview at all to be able to require it? I don't know the answer to it, I'm just asking the question.
I mean, it is accurate. KDOT owns that roadway. Their approval is required to install that signal. And so, I've been in communication, both formal and through informal correspondence, with those decision-makers at the Kane County Division of Transportation, and we provided them with the engineering basis for installing it. So, it's my expectation that they'll support that installation.
And again, if I might, Mr. Cruz, just, he's a contractor, his company is a contract purchaser of this land. We won't close on the purchase of the land and then move forward with the project if we don't get that from KDOT. So, we'll be working with Ms. Hoffe to make sure that before we acquire the property and then come in and annex, et cetera, then, we have that approval. Otherwise, you'll continue to see farming there. Okay?
Okay, thank you. And one more question. There was an updated traffic study today, and I think that had higher volumes. Has that been reviewed by the city yet?
That was submitted to our third-party traffic consultant. He is on the line, I believe, if he has any additional comments.
Can you hear me?
Yep, yes, we can.
Okay, this is Matt Baldwin from Tran Systems. I briefly reviewed the report that was submitted today. The update in traffic and the increases were pretty marginal compared to the overall traffic volumes that were anticipated daily, so I don't have any objections to anything that was shown in there. As you can see in the report, the changes to the level of service and delay from what was presented previously is very marginal. So, we have reviewed it, and I don't have any objections to what was presented.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have, I have one more question, as would be regarding the landscaping along Kirk Road and the berm. And this might be more for the city, but obviously that'll be important to screen. And so, what about upkeep of that? Is there any special requirements for the landowner to keep that, to keep that landscaping intact and keep it up?
There is part of the landscape plan, there's a maintenance and monitoring period and certain standards that get set forth there. And ultimately, it falls on the owner or the user to take care of that, and it would definitely be in their best interest, and I have never seen it not done before, so, with these type of developments, so.
We've seen some, you know, landscape berms that haven't always been kept up. So, does the city have any ability in this case to remedy that?
The code requires that with an approved site plan and an approved landscape plan as part of that, that it is maintained. So, if it's not being maintained, we have the ability to cite them and pursue code enforcement to
Yep.
to either replace dead material or remove dead material.
Yep. And also that is KDOT, Kane County DOT road there, in their right-of-way as well there. So, the portion in the right-of-way would be, obviously, the county at any time could say, hey, you have to do it as well. And the portion on the Geneva would be, Geneva could use code enforcement to maintain the upkeep.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Adam, do you have anything?
Yes, I just got a few questions. My first few questions, I'm not sure if this is better directed at Mr. Ovington or Ms. Hanlon, but with respect to the site, do we have any sense, or maybe somebody has a sense, for how long it's been listed for sale? Does anybody have any idea? No? I guess my question mainly is, what, as far as I know you've mentioned about the surrounding uses, is there any sense of why it hasn't sold to a residential developer yet based on how, obviously, you know, busy the residential market has been?
I don't have any specific information about why it hasn't been pursued for residential. But what I can tell you is the city future land use plan, which establishes your policy for guiding future development, shows this property or designates this property for industrial development. So, that could be a big contributing factor. And again, that trend has been for the residential on the west side of the road.
And any thoughts to any other use of the land other than the industrial use that we're looking at?
No, I believe that because your policy is that it should develop as industrial, and Kane County's 2040 plan shows the same, I think that that is the appropriate future land use for the property.
Okay, thank you. And this might be, sorry.
Wait a second. I can add to that. We have had some residential developers look at the site in recent years and do their due diligence in quite a bit of it, but found it to be cost prohibitive to pursue.
Okay. And this might be, again, something for you, Mr. DeGroot. I noticed that Cushman and Wakefield's listing flyer had mentioned, and I understand this is unincorporated Kane County, their listing had listed the property in St. Charles. Is that mainly due to probably name recognition against Geneva? Or any sense of why that's listed as St. Charles, but then they're coming because, coming to us in Geneva?
I can answer that. That's a marketing department that inadvertently puts St. Charles on it. Oftentimes, if you try to put in a postal address on an unincorporated land site, it comes up with the wrong town.
Got it.
City.
Okay. And since you're there, Mr. Cruz, one last question. As far as, has there any been, any consideration been placed on, due to the size of the facility, putting solar panels on there?
We have not pursued that. That would be an owner-occupier decision. As a spec developer, I can tell you in Illinois, we have not pursued solar on our rooftops. There's a number of concerns with insurance
Okay.
carriers. And frankly, Illinois tax, or Illinois utility rates are not high enough usually to offset and produce a payback period here.
Okay. All right, very good. And then my only last question is in reference to the Jacob and Hefner document. On page eight, there was a comment made about the water main and connecting the 10-inch fire protection line in two locations into the 12-inch water main. But then the response just says the 10-inch fire protection line is a private fire protection line. Correct. So, does that mean that you will connect in two places or not? I guess that's...
Yes, we will have two connections into the public main. We are extending the public main from Geneva Drive to Kirk Road. So, in that extension along Geneva Drive, we will have two proposed taps on there for a 10-inch loop. We're still working with state staff on the exact limits of that loop, but we will have two taps for sure as well for a public loop.
Okay.
And the extents are still being determined with final engineering.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, any other comments or follow-up items from that testimony from the commissioner? Rebecca?
This question is for you, sir. There was a question about... This question is for you, sir. There was a question about the stormwater system. And it says, you know, there was a little more research to be done and how that was going to be handled, one or two scenarios. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Would you like me to kind of give a overview?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry. So I'll try to give it as high a level as possible. If you have questions, feel free to stop me and ask me. So the site currently has a few different existing drainage patterns. It kind of divides some to Geneva and some to the north of St. Charles across a bike path. And our site also accepts flow from Kirk Road and even some of the development to the west, the housing development, comes underneath Kirk Road, and what we call is bypass flow. And so what that means is that flow is routed to our site. And we, as a develop, as any kind of land development that goes on, you are supposed to get that flow from point A to point B still. You don't have to detain it. You don't have to do anything like that. It's being pretty much brought to your site not wanted. So with those couple of different drainage divides, we are now proposing to have one centralized detention pond at the south across Geneva Drive. That pond will store all the stormwater associated with our site's runoff, our entire site's runoff, and will discharge and connect into Geneva Drive and head east along Geneva Drive. And then the north side, there will be, the area that was going across to St. Charles and to the north will remain, but we are reducing that flow by, everything else that was going from our site to the north of St. Charles will be detained in this new detention pond. And this detention pond is sized to handle all of that flow.
Oh, okay.
Does that help?
Yes. Yep, I think so. Yeah, thank you.
Any other follow-up questions?
Just one comment. I don't know why we could not make a condition, add a condition for a signal intersection as part of the approval, that the approvals would be subject to KDOT approval of a signal intersection at Geneva and Kirk satisfactory to city staff.
We've done it before.
It seems like a reasonable expectation. And what I'm hearing from Mr. Cruz and others is that would be an acceptable condition.
Yeah, they have, they have a business requirement.
Right.
Ultimately, that decision would be made by KDOT.
Correct, correct. Yes. But we can make a conditional. We've done that in the past.
Right.
Yep. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, great. All right, so we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the thing. And we have a few people online. I think we have 14 people online. So we'll start with the first people here in City Hall and see how we go. And if we get down the line too long, we might have to switch over to the virtual to give them a chance as well. So we'll start with the folks here in City Hall. So I'll go by the order of people that signed up on the sheet. And the first person is Kari Bachke.
That's pretty close. I'll pronounce it. I'm assuming you want me to come up to the whole?
I am terrible with names. Sorry.
Okay. My name is Carl Bachke. I live at 538 Lexington Drive in Geneva. I've been in the Geneva East subdivision for 15 years. And I've got questions primarily in the area of traffic and safety concerns for the neighborhood, as well as just general local impact. So my first question related to traffic is, in terms of the consideration for extending Geneva Drive from Couch Road all the way through until Kirk, was there a consideration by the developer or the owner of the property to, rather than make that additional expense, to use, just extend Geneva Drive to the property?
If I can interrupt, please, please address us.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And we will just take all the comments and line them up, and then we'll have them respond.
Oh, okay. My understanding was that I could address the...
You can, you can address it to us. We'll make sure we get the questions lined up.
Okay, perfect. I misunderstood.
And then at the end, we'll go over all of them. And then if you don't like the answer, you'll have a chance to respond.
All right, great.
All right.
So I guess, I guess my question related to Geneva Drive extension was, had it been considered to just extend Geneva Drive from Couch Road to the existing property, thus avoiding the cost of adding the traffic light, plus the traffic disruption of adding the traffic light, especially in light of the plans to widen Couch Road and eventually intersect Couch Road with Fabian Parkway? It would seem to me that would be a much more, a much less disruptive to the residents of Geneva East. That's one. When we talk about noise, and I saw the noise map, has anyone ever been next to a semi truck who stopped a stoplight when their air brakes release, and then when they take off from the stoplight? So those people living there are not just being impacted by the truck that's moving down the road in noise. They're being impacted by the noise of the truck stopping and starting. So I want to make that point. Also, and I know it was stated that it was taken into consideration for the additional pass-through traffic on Geneva Drive. It was also noted, interestingly enough, because we've seen it as well, about the semi trucks for cold storage parking on Geneva Drive, and how many of those trucks that are currently accessing it, you know, by going up to Couch and coming in off Geneva Drive, are now going to be going right up Kirk to the new Geneva Drive extension. And has that been taken into consideration as well, how much additional traffic besides this site property is going to be happening? And finally, this is just a comment about the economic impact and the quote $15 an hour jobs. That's $30,000 a year. The average home price in Geneva is near $400,000. There won't be many of those folks owning homes in Geneva. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we want to do that, or you want to go with their preference?
Yeah, I guess I can ask you preference. Do you want to respond immediately, or do you wish us to pull? Because there are going to be, it's going to be extensive testimony.
So I'm taking notes. So I guess if it's all right with you, I'll make, when everyone's done with this, we'll, I'll call up our experts on those questions and address them.
We're keeping them tracked up here as well, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so the next person is Michelle Rathman?
Good evening. Michelle Rathman, same household, 538 Lexington Drive. I have many concerns about this project. I feel like I should tell you that we just went through this with a son and daughter-in-law in Colorado, same exact kind of situation. They had a lot more notice and community involvement, so therefore they were able to stop this project, also a part of a residential community. I wonder when the traffic studies were done, if they were done in 2020 or in 2021. I don't think that would be a fair representation of the actual traffic in our community, because many of us have been working at home because of COVID, as most of you know. So I'm curious when the traffic study was done. I also wonder if any of these folks have actually walked down Kirk Road, tried to walk their dog or a grandchild down Kirk Road. It is, that demonstration I saw was very nice, but I don't feel that it was a fair representation of what we experience, living right off of Geneva and Kirk Road. The other question I have is about economic development. I'm involved with building hospitals. And one of the things that we look at for every community is, what is the economic impact, true economic impact, secondary impact spending? When you're talking about 500 potential new jobs, low-wage jobs, starting at $15 an hour, as my husband indicated, have we looked at alternatives? What is the actual economic impact of this community? What do we expect to get in return for all of this heartache for those of us who live there and all the expense compared to what we're going to have to spend to upkeep? Another concern I have is that I own a business in Geneva. I've been in business for 30 years. I rely heavily on our power. And for multiple times this past couple of years, we've had internet outages, power outages. And I'm concerned about our community being able to support the energy needs of a facility of this size. So I know we have that, as well as our water concerns and the major investments that we're being asked to make and to repair our water. So that's another concern that I have as well. I was also concerned about the security. With a building of that size, I would imagine that we're going to have to have more patrols from our police officers. As a resident of Geneva and Lexington Drive, I can promise you, we have very little police presence on our street, therefore enforcing our speed limits. So I wonder what that will do to increase the need for security, increase the need for expansion of the budget to accommodate security and police enforcement and all that on that property. So that's another concern that I have. Another concern I have is that it's really easy to make promises in the dark. I was very concerned with a lot of the ambiguous language in the 412 pages that were posted to the website on September 3rd. It's very easy for representatives of the owner to say they could, they would, they should. But at the end of the day, it all boils down to the devil is in the details. And how will these details be enforced and remedied to make sure that they are in compliance and that they are being good community stewards? They're from Texas. They have no, not you all, y'all, they have no interest in being community stewards. And so I want to know what we will do to make sure that they are really keeping in mind the best interest of this community and not that of their profits of having a massive distribution site. Let me just turn my page here. Stormwater, I think I got it all. So I thank you for considering my comments. I'm opposed to it for what I think very good reasons, and I hope that you consider what we're sharing with you tonight as a resident of the site of Geneva. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think it's Howker Bullman. I can't, it's Henri Road. Sir? It's definitely Mr. Bullman, Henri Road. Okay. Guess he's not here. John Baumgartner?
My name is John Baumgartner. I live at 1594 Wesley Court in the Geneva East subdivision in Geneva. A public speaker, I'm not. So I'm going to just read what I have here, okay? Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight, Mr. Chairman. I would like to commend the staff. The report they put together is very thorough, and I wanted to recognize them for their immense time put into this project so far. With that being said, I am opposed to this truck facility for several reasons. The type and number of trucks that will be used and stored at this facility is concerning. The amount of noise, diesel exhaust, and traffic that will be generated should not be tolerated. And if this is a 24-hour facility, lighting at night, which I know was addressed, will be another concern. And with the extension of Geneva Drive, trucks will sit at the intersection, and to what this gentleman was saying earlier, he stole my thunder, that, that the, at the intersection, and it will create noise when they move, which will be heard by the residents in the Geneva East subdivision constantly. Have you ever sat by a stoplight, like this gentleman said, next to a semi? Usually, I have to roll up my windows because of the revving and shifting a semi needs to do to get going. It is not the driver's fault. It's just the nature of the beast. In the report, it is stated that the proposed development is anticipated to generate 350 truck trips and 1,470 car trips within a 24-hour period. I just would like to know what a trip is exactly. I don't know if Mr. Tru can tell me what a trip is.
We'll get an answer to that question.
That's fine. Thank you. Also, in the report, the applicant has stated that the user, as this gentleman said earlier, the undisclosed Fortune 100 Trucking Corporation of the property has the ability to schedule deliveries and employ shifts during non-peak hours to alleviate any additional trips from the development. They have the ability, but they're definitely not required to do so. How would you regulate that anyways? Also, the trips generated from the proposed development, according to the report, does not seem to include or take into account the trips from other industries down the street. I actually tried to look at the traffic study. There's a lot of information there. It might have been addressed, but I don't think so. So you're going to be adding trips because of the building down the street. The petitioner in the report says that the proposed building or use will not diminish the value of adjacent and nearby properties. How can it not have an adverse impact on values throughout the subdivision? Does the petitioner really believe that putting a berm and trees next to the proposed property will protect property values in Geneva, in Geneva East in particular? The report states that although the applicant has taken these steps to minimize adverse impacts, the applicant has not provided clear evidence that property values will or will not be impacted. Of course, they'll be impacted, and definitely not in a positive way. Mr. Chairman, on page 12, point number five of the report, it states, "Development of the site will produce a change to the built environment in this portion of the community. The visual comparison and land use contrast between the Geneva East subdivision located to the west of the proposed project site will be the most divergent, meaning the most different, the most deviating." There is going to be a big difference. However, given the proposed plans for screening and landscaping of the proposed development, the potential change is not anticipated, not anticipated to produce an adverse effect to the character of the area. This will change the character of the area. Again, a berm and trees does not change the fact that this is a trucking terminal, not a residential development like the family-oriented Geneva East. On page 14, point number nine, the report states, "To the west is the Geneva East subdivision, made up of several detached single-family homes." Several is an understatement. There are 110 homes within 500 feet of the development site. There are over 425 homes in the Geneva, Geneva East area, excluding approximately the same number of homes in the Chesapeake Commons area, to include Manchester and Britta Lanes, across the street, a stone's throw from me, which is south of Geneva Drive. This now brings me to a question, why this development is being categorized as light industrial. Quote 117B1, description and intent states, "The I-1 Light Industrial District is designed to provide an environment suitable for industrial warehousing, office business service, and compatible commercial uses that do not create appreciable nuisances or hazards, or that require a pleasant hazard and nuisance-free environment." The Light Industrial District does contain the permitted use of warehouse and distribution. But this facility type will create a nuisance. It will not be a pleasant and nuisance-free environment for the residential area. Now, I'd like to also point out in 117C-1, under I-2 General Industrial District, the description and intent states, "The I-2 General Industrial District is designed to accommodate those industrial activities which may produce moderate nuisances and hazards, or hazards, in areas that are relatively remote from the residential and business development." Under the permitted uses section of I-2, it also states that warehousing and distribution is permitted. This brings me to question what category of facility this really is. I believe this facility is not going to be strictly warehouse distribution facility. I believe this facility is not going to be strictly warehouse-distribution facility. Due to the size and scope of the facility with a warehouse and the enormous size of the parking and storage outside of the facility, this, I believe, fits the description of a truck terminal. This to me shows that the use of the property, which includes approximately 300 semi-trailer slots for parking, not quick temporary parking, but what I believe to be long-term parking, puts the facility in the General Industrial District Special Uses category of truck terminal or Carriage Express facility. What is the definition of a trucking terminal? According to the often-used attorney website, Law Insider.com, the definition is as follows. Truck terminal means the use of land buildings or structures or portions thereof where transports are stored, rented, leased, kept for hire, or parked, or from which trucks or transports are dispatched as common carriers, or where goods are stored temporarily for further This facility, in my opinion, is not light industrial due to the sheer size of trailer parking and storage area. I'm not opposed to development of the area. There are more suitable uses for the property, more suitable uses for the property. This proposed truck terminal is not the facility to be built for the reasons I presented earlier. Those reasons also are not, they're all, they are far from all-encompassing, so there are many other reasons. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your time. I hope you take my, my comments and statements into consideration and deny the petitioner's request to bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have, next up is Greg Knup, 1865 Chandler. Sorry, sir, I may have mispronounced your last name.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Greg Knup. I live at 1865 Chandler, actually on the St. Charles side of Division Street, but still within 500 feet of the development, potential development. And I, the first traffic impact study that I saw mentioned 350 trucks being generated by this facility per day. Then the second, or the revision of that that came out today, I think if I read it right, was like 510. And my understanding was that they estimate that 30% of trucks coming and going, well, 30% were going to be going north up Kirk Road, approximately 40% were going to be going south down Kirk Road, and the other 30% were going to be heading east toward Couts Road, if I recall. So if you do the math, based on, even based on the 350 trucks, if 30% are going to be going north, I mean, that's over 100 trucks, and then it's worse for Geneva going south, 40% of that. So the one question I have is, I'm guessing that these trucks are not necessarily going to be just confined to Kirk Road. I mean, I guess one big question is, how many of them will end up going west on Route 38 through downtown Geneva, or 64 through downtown St. Charles? And I understand about the weight limits on Geneva Drive, I'm honestly not sure if they have that same posting on Division Street, but that would be another concern, is potential for, you know, trucks going down that direction. So that was, that was one, probably the biggest issue for me. The other question I had, though, about the berm and the height of the facility, the berm, they said it was going to be an eight-foot-high berm. Is that eight feet high above Kirk Road level? And if so, then how high is the building above that, top of that berm, is what I would like to know?
Todd?
Okay. And so that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move over to the virtual group and give them an opportunity. So for those of you online who wish to participate and provide some testimony, please use the raised hand function on your application so you can be recognized to speak on this matter.
The commission calls upon Rose Johnson. Please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony. Rose, are you with us? Rose, it looks like you're self-muted. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Rose, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
All right, well, Rose will try to get back to you. Let's move on to this next one.
The commission calls upon Todd Ellenberger. Todd, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hello, and thank you. My name's Todd Ellenberger. I'm at 1854 Chandler Avenue on the St. Charles side. First question that I have regarding the landscaping on the, on Kirk Avenue on the west side of this facility. It's great that they're planting stuff, and they're hoping it's going to be beneficial in hiding the building. However, how long is it going to take for these trees and plants and whatnot to mature to actually hide this facility? That's my first question. Like the other gentlemen, I'm not a public speaker, so please bear with me. I try to make this quick, short. I appreciate your guys' time and everything that you're doing, but I have great concerns over this project. And I'm afraid of the impact, not only on the residents that live here, but also with the loss of property values, and the loss of property values, but of the two schools and one daycare facility, all less than a mile and a half away, depending on where your starting point is for the building, and the environmental impact of the area. I hope that Geneva isn't jumping on the quote-unquote mega warehouse bandwagon and building something in the hopes that if you build it, they will come. Just because a holding company wants to build it and says that they have someone ready to move in, it's no guarantee that it will happen. And I say this because driving a short distance from this location will show mega warehouses that are not only completely vacant or partially vacant, and owned by a holding company. Case in point are the mega warehouses that are vacant and partially vacant in the West Chicago Business Park, the ones at Munger and Sterns Road, the ones on Gary Avenue, north of Armory Trail Road, and the many on Route 64 from Kirk Road all the way down to I-355, and the ones that litter the east side of Alkro Village. I know Geneva is landlocked and has limited spaces available for growth, which makes using this land for housing, in my opinion, a much better idea that would benefit the community better. A prime example of this is in Warrenville. When they built the Amazon Fulfillment Center down on Duke Parkway in Naperville, across the street in Warrenville, they built a residential area, all of which sold quickly, even during the COVID lockdown. That's what I feel we need here. If you build homes, you bring in people which will drive businesses coming in. Maybe that added residential count will help you sell off both south corners of 38 and Kirk. Maybe it'll help sell off the vacant property east of Kirk on the north and south side of 38, one being the huge property to the east of CNC Lubricants over on Old Kirk Road. People say that businesses drive, business drives business, but it was the influx of people in Warrenville that brought in a restaurant, a service station, and more developments coming. If I have read all the documentation correctly, which is very hard to do because it's very detailed, this seems like it's all about tax revenue for the city. But you're giving a tax break to the builder while our taxes have to pay for the infrastructure. Then you're giving a tax break to the holding company to entice the company to move in. What happens when the company you're giving these breaks for fold? Where is your revenue then? At least if you build housing, you always collect taxes, even if it's bank-owned. Building this is going to have an environmental impact. More trucks means more idling to stay cool, stay warm, which is going to affect the air quality, as it's the main contributor to smog, which is especially a problem for those with compromised breathing and heart conditions, like the kind of people that live, reside, and are being taken care of at the Geneva Nursing and Rehab Center, which is roughly a mile away. It's going to produce more runoff of diesel fuel, antifreeze, et cetera, and it's going to get in our sewers, our groundwater, and even the river. I did see that the traffic study was updated, however, in an earlier version, it mentioned that truck traffic will increase overnight. I can tell that no one that's proposing this building lives in the east side, because if they did, I don't think this would pass. No one with kids wants to have them awake at night because a subbing truck is beeping all day back in a doc, or having to listen to the roar of trucks idling through the night. Of course, what the study doesn't show are the number of fatalities that have already happened in Kirk Road, or how the number of vehicles larger than a typical cargo van has grown considerably with the opening of the Amazon Fulfillment Center in the West Chicago Business Park, or the number of trucks that daily blow the light at Division and Kirk, or how many vehicles don't stop at the bike path to the south of Geneva Drive. As a former CDL Class A over-the-road truck driver with a million miles driven, trucks don't stop on a dime. They use brake brakes. If nobody's familiar with those, that's the roar you hear from a truck as it's trying to slow down quickly. It's extremely loud and deserving, disturbing. When I was driving, I was warned by the people that trained me that a truck has the ability to harm or kill thousands when not operated properly. And those that live here on the east side see those operated poorly daily. Please, let's not add more irresponsible drivers to an already congested thoroughfare. As I mentioned earlier, there is the Kensington School of St. Charles and the Ivy Academy of Early Learning, both less than a half mile away. The Foxridge Early Learning Center, which is a little over a mile away, and the east side sports complex that borders this property, and your future planned development to the east. It's proposed facility, is this proposed facility the best thing to bring to the area, or would housing be better? More people, more residents, more tax revenue for the city. In my opinion, do the community and the city of Geneva great service and send them to the West Chicago Business Park. Earth movers have already prepped multiple spots for a building of this size, and the infrastructure is already there. They can have a building up quicker there in an already properly zoned area than they would have out here at Geneva Farms North. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. So again, we're taking testimony from people that are watching virtually. If you wish to be heard on this matter, please use the raised hand function on your application so you can be recognized to speak.
The commission calls upon Rose Johnson. Rose, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony. Rose, please proceed to unmute yourself.
All right, well...
Rose, are you, are you there? Looks like you're self-muted.
All right. Rose will try again some other, yeah, the technology is challenging.
The commission calls upon Vicki Verboom. Vicki, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Vicki Verboom. I'm at 688 Parker Court and have been a resident of Geneva for the last 11 years. I appreciate the testimony that came before me and agree with majority of it, so I won't repeat a lot of it. I just want to underscore a few points. One is the bike path. So the gentleman right before me mentioned the bike path that's right there on Kirk Road. My family and many families frequently use that bike path to go to West Chicago and back. It is already a pretty tricky spot to navigate when you're on your bike, especially if you have little ones. There's nice markings on the road, but it's not always followed. And so to the point about how trucks, especially 53-foot trucks, stopping on a dime, especially if they're over the road haulers and they're on the road quite a bit, it's a concern when you're having children and families trying to use that, that spot. There was one comment previously, early in the testimony, about the facility itself not needing to be LEED certified, that's not required. I would hope that Geneva would consider any new building to be at least baseline LEED certified as we think about our impacts. You know, it's, we're removing some trees and some natural vegetation, but at the very least, I would hope that some of our new builds were baseline LEED certified. So I'm not opposed to new development. I obviously, you know, want to see the city improve and grow, especially on the east side, but just want to make sure we do it smartly. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Did you try Rose again? We're going to try her again, Rose.
Rose, you've now been unmuted. Please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Yeah? See, probably your speaker's broken or something.
Rose Johnson, please proceed to unmute yourself. Looks like you're self-muted.
All right. Let's take someone else.
It's like, maybe remind people to raise their hands.
All right, so again, if you're on remote, virtual, watching the hearing, if you wish to speak on this matter, please use the raised hand function on your application so you can be recognized to speak. Okay, so we'll go back to the people present in City Hall, since maybe we'll get to Rose in the future. Okay, so next person I have here in City Hall to testify is Patrick Dickerson.
My name is Pat Dickinson, 619 Chandler Avenue, 20-year-plus resident, east side, and I'm guessing I was not within the 500 feet. I did not receive any kind of notice, and I'm just here, based on your excellent presentation this evening, I had a couple brief questions. One, traffic-wise, was I've heard about peak traffic percentage increase. I'd like to know what the off-peak traffic percent...
Sir, sir, if you'd just direct your question.
Oh, excuse me, and specifically off-peak during the hours of darkness, because I think that's a great concern. I also, and wanted to confirm, I'm hearing about all this tonight for $600,000 a year to Geneva, the community, is that accurate, or am I missing something? Because that seems like a very small amount when you, perhaps you consider factoring in the loss of tax revenue from Geneva East beyond 500 feet, because I promise you that there will be a loss. And I refer to the well-intentioned business plans of this community to include our electric goals that perhaps did not pan out as we intended or had hoped, and I envision something like that occurring with this project as well. So I would ask some type of study or consideration to see, what would a 10%, 20%, 30% real estate property tax loss for Geneva East, not just the 500 feet, and see if that number is greater than $600,000 a year? And then also, I'd conclude with, at the end of this meeting, since it is running late this evening, drive up Geneva Drive after the meeting, eastbound, hit Kirk Road, roll down your window, look at the lights, that you're going to see the lighting that already exists at facilities well past, well east of this proposed project, and look at the lighting from that spot, and tell me it does not affect your eyesight when you try to turn right or left on Kirk Road, any hour of darkness. And that's it briefly. And that's it briefly. I just wanted to get those questions on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe it's John Dashner.
Good evening. My name is John Dashner. I live at 733 Lexington Drive in Geneva, and I have been a Geneva resident for over 30 years in that Geneva East area and seen it grow, develop, et cetera. And I'd like to address three areas of concern for me. First of all, the Schwartz study. In terms of looking at off-peak hours, in the body of the Schwartz report, they talk about a offset shift change. And further in the study, Appendix A, I believe, they actually delineate the times that the trucks will be arriving. And it shows, if I'm correct, and the traffic person can verify that or not, comes the 89% of the truck traffic is going to be coming from 9:00 PM to 4:00 AM. And we're going to have 500 jobs at $15 an hour in that timeframe. I'm not sure that that's really conducive to the Geneva way of development. It just doesn't make any sense to me. With regard to the construction project itself, the applicant contends that 250 jobs are going to be created. Unfortunately, many of those jobs are not going to be Geneva-specific. They're going to be Northern Illinois jobs, right? You're going to get a precaster that's going to put up the building that's going to be down in Aurora. You're going to get a roofing contractor from up in Lake Zurich. They're not Geneva residents. That 250 jobs is disingenuous, thinking, telling us that they're going to be people who are living in Geneva. It's just not going to be the case. I do think that there's no amplification of how many full-time jobs he's going to create versus how many part-time jobs he's going to create at the $15 an hour. Staff has suggested that because it's a Fortune 100 company, we're going to have 401K, we're going to have all these benefits that are coming out of an HR program, but we don't know how many people are going to be getting that benefit. It sounds to me, in reading this, that many, many of these jobs are going to be the $15 an hour project, you know, employees. I think that many people have brought up excellent points. I think you, as zoning and planning, have got a responsibility to the citizens of the East Side of Geneva to have thoughtful, meaningful development. You look at the stick drawing that they provided to show us what that elevation is going to look like, and you compare it to the rendition that was done for the Mill Race Inn. It's disingenuous. It's ridiculous. This is a multi-billion-dollar company, and we can't get an adequate rendition of what this building is going to look like and how it's going to impact that side, the East Side of Geneva? I think there needs to be more thought from the planning and zoning and making that development more in line with what we really are looking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I have Mary Tripp. No? Okay. David Wallenstak, 578 Lexington Drive? I'm sorry, I'm sure I destroyed your last name.
I'm at 578 Lexington Drive, David Wallenziak. I've been living in Geneva East now for almost 32 years, and I am not, not in favor of putting some kind of businesses there. I think we need the jobs and, you know, the tax revenue, but I am very concerned about the amount of truck traffic that's going to be created and the noise. One thing that kind of scared me is they're talking about near the building, the level of a vacuum cleaner? I mean, that's a tremendous amount of noise. I know when I vacuum at home, I'm wearing hearing protection. Anyway, the second thing, most of the things that I wanted to present have already been talked about, but I am concerned about the amount of traffic that may be flowing through our subdivision. Geneva Drive is a narrow street that has to accommodate, it's one of the two main entrances, exits to the subdivision, and the amount of children that are, and people that are crossing that street constantly, from the townhomes to the single-residence homes, it's tremendous during the summer and especially during the dusk hours. And I'm just worried, how are you going to control the amount of extra traffic that's going to be coming down that street? Again, you know, I don't want to put, as a comparison, you go to Division Street and it is going through a residential, but it's a little more wider street-through-street. You've got Geneva Drive that you're putting this main intersection, you're going by two small parks that you've got the roadway narrowed down to have kids cross. I'm just wondering, how many people are going to be cutting through there? And I think long-term-wise, we're looking at traffic studies right now, as of whenever this was done. But once you open up Geneva Drive and you put this intersection, and now we're talking about them looking at the property east of this property and everything else, how many people, including the refrigerated plant, are now going to be using that intersection at Kirk? So I think it's a lot more truck traffic and car traffic than, you know, what's being given here. So anyway, those are my major concerns. Again, I'm in favor of getting something in there, but I don't think that this is the correct thing that we need to do for Geneva. It's not the Geneva way of life. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. I have Jim Alabaster, 129 Commercial.
He was with us for the first time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's over this one.
Okay, okay. So Sarah's there, okay. Austin Dempsey?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to come out here. While I am a Batavia resident, not a wonderful Geneva resident, my company, BEI Properties, has represented this property for over 50 years, and we take great pride in the fact that BEI Properties has been a positive, impactful community and real estate developer in the Greater Fox Valley area, especially in the Geneva area, for multiple decades. Well, not as long as Crow Holdings has been around, 62 years is a pretty good run for a local real estate company. And so Commissioner, to answer your question, we've had the property on the market since 1971. So over 50 years, we have been marketing the property, and one might think, wow, what a terrible admission of not a good real estate company to be trying to market something for 50 years. And while I may agree with you on that, I'd like to provide just a brief perspective on why 51 years, and this is the first time we're standing in this room on this piece of property. It's not because we don't know what we're doing. It's not because we haven't had, as Mr. DeGroot had mentioned, some other developers kick the tires and some other projects kick the tires. It's because, like, projects that we've been involved with, Geneva Commons, the Stevens Street Development Project, Myers &amp; Lowes, and most of Randall Road over the years, over the decades, many housing developments, Fisher Farms, to name just one major one, that had such positive community impact on Geneva, we were waiting for the right project. This project, and I've been in rooms like, I've been in this room on projects like that. I've been in rooms like this all over the Greater Fox Valley, talking and having some very positive and impactful conversations with passionate community citizens just like this. And I can say that in our experience, and we do, under full disclosure, represent the property, this project has the opportunity to not only fit within the comprehensive plan that Geneva has outlined since 2003, that is outlined in the 2040 Kane County Plan, but it creates jobs, 500 of them, lots of them. And, okay, maybe it's $15 an hour, but that may be the first job that my son gets on a path towards understanding the value of hard work and education. That may happen at this facility. It fits within the mindset of what, and the zoning of what's happening on the road, and it creates millions of dollars of revenue, 600 and some thousand to start, but over a period of time, just like other projects we've been involved with, has such a positive and significant impact on the community over the long term without having a negative impact on schools, parks, or library. There is a lot of reasons to support this project. There's a lot of reasons to have this good conversation about what this project is and what this project does. I am one in favor of significant support on a project like this, and I'm delighted to have an opportunity to come here this evening to address you, Commissioners, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. I have Pat Bugner.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Pat Bugner, and I live at 581 Green Meadow, and my house looks directly across Kirk Road at this property. And I can't think of anything less that should be there than the impact that it will have on the whole area, but definitely those of us who live back across, right across Kirk Road. First of all, I don't understand if you want to come before this group and you want to build across from a housing project, a housing grouping, that you would put the trucking bays on the Kirk side when if you put them on the Couch side where there are no houses, nobody would have the impact or not as much impact as you're going to have when you open your windows at night or during the day, anytime, and you see three times as many trucks going down the road or idling right across. And if, I'm sorry, any of you may come to my house at any time and stand, and if you think it sounds like a vacuum cleaner, you are going deaf. It is loud, and it will be even louder and louder, and no one wants to be disturbed in the middle of the night by trucks going in and out. So I am totally opposed to it, and for a lot of the other reasons, I could go on about traffic, but that's, you know, you've heard it all. So I'm begging you, please do not put this type of a facility right backed up to our houses. Thank you.
I think it's Renee, I want to say, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's me.
Oh, okay. I thought it might be, but.
Sorry.
Is it Mr. Santal?
Sartel. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Sartel. I live at 548 Lexington Drive. You know, most of what has already been voiced to you tonight were concerns that I had. My wife and I have lived in Geneva East since 1989. We're 32-year residents. We've raised four sons in that neighborhood, who all went to local schools. I guess I would just raise two things. I think the timing of this proposal and the fact that more people did not know about it, and those of us who are here tonight only heard about it within the last week or two. So had this been publicized in the papers, had it not been buried on the City of Geneva's website so deep, it's almost impossible to find, I think this room would be full tonight of Geneva East residents. So I'm concerned that there are so many people in that area that will be impacted that don't even know about this particular proposal. And then I would just say, you know, I retired last Friday. My wife and I are considering selling our home in Geneva East within the next four to five years, but as one previous gentleman commented, based on this proposal and should it go through, we would probably list our house much sooner and get out of Geneva East before the values are in fact impacted. And I think there are going to be a lot of homeowners feeling the same way in that subdivision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so that completes the list that I have here for public comments here at City Hall. We're going to try virtual, and I'll make one last round, make sure there isn't somebody else who wants to speak. So again, if you're virtual, doing this remotely, and you wish to speak on this matter, please use the raised hand function on your application so you can be recognized to speak on this
The commission now calls upon Rose Johnson. Rose?
Rose Cross.
Okay, hold.
All right, Rose.
Go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony. Rose, it looks like you're self muted.
She was signed in twice, so she might have logged off one device and not the other. Yeah, that's possible. Well, sorry, Rose, if you can't get online, you can't hear from you, so. Is there anyone else online that wishes to testify on this matter? Please use the raised hand function on your application so we can recognize you to speak. There is no one? Okay. So is there anyone else here in City Hall who wishes to speak on this matter who has not done so so far? I think it's probably here from the applicant in terms of response to the questions received.
So Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I wrote down lots and lots of comments. Many of them were simply comments and opinions, but I also wrote down and starred those that I thought were questions. So I'm going to call on, and I've got our professionals' names next to them. So Sarah, our traffic consultant, Ms. Disneyhoff, I'll ask you the questions if you would give the answers. Do you want to come up with a question?
Sure.
So when were your traffic studies done? Does the fact that COVID may or may, the question suggested, maybe traffic is not what it normally is because of COVID? And what do we expect? Okay, that's it. And what is a trip? And did the trip count include additional background traffic?
Sure. So speaking first to the question about COVID, that is absolutely something that we need to cross-check for under current circumstances. And so we collect traffic counts out at the intersections that we've studied, and then we compare them to historical data documented on the iDOT website to see if there has been a drop in traffic as a result of reduced commuting behaviors during COVID. In the cases where we saw less traffic on certain roadways, we would factor it up to match pre-COVID conditions to create our baseline. Though I will say, based on the travel trends, generally speaking, through the region, while morning peak hour traffic tends to still be a little low, evening peak hour traffic has generally recovered to the volume that was previously documented and in some cases even higher, just because some people have changed their behaviors to be moving about at different times of day. So that is something that was factored in, and the manner in which we did that is in accordance with the industry standard held by all the major jurisdictional agencies in northeastern Illinois, iDOT and KDOT. As for the definition of a trip, that is an engineering terminology that we use to differentiate between a physical car and the act of how that car going to a facility will enter and exit. The entering movement is a trip. The outbound movement is a trip. The outbound movement is a trip. So, one vehicle in the course of a day creates two trips. And so, when we speak about trips, we're talking about the movement into and out of the property rather than simply how many cars are parked in a lot. And then, as to the consideration of additional traffic that would utilize the Geneva Drive extension, as I mentioned earlier, there were four primary sources that we considered to utilize that Geneva Drive extension. One is that existing industrial facility on the south side of Geneva Drive, just west of Couts Road. We did counts at the Geneva Drive and Couts Road intersection to quantify how much traffic is coming in and out today, and made an assumption for how much would route over to Kirk. We considered any future development on the parcel north of Geneva Drive, west of Couts Road, and assigned some of that traffic to use that new extension. We also considered that some traffic traveling through this area currently on Couts may choose to move over to use Kirk as a through trip. And then similarly, there are vehicles that are traveling into and out of Geneva East on Geneva Drive, turning on to and off of Kirk Road today, that some may choose to go through using that new connection to Couts Road. So, those are the different sources of traffic in addition to this development that we considered using that new intersection and the extension of Geneva Drive to meet Couts Road. Is that it?
Another question, Sarah, was someone wondered, how many additional trips, especially by trucks, would you imagine would go east and west on 38 and 64?
Sure. So, the limits of our study area looked at Division on the north and Avril on the south, which is a common boundary to set, looking at the next signalized intersections to the north and south. I do remember that an aspect of that question was about trucks per day and 40% to and from the south. That was a lucky person who got to spend a lot of time reading our study, and well done. And so, in terms of daily truck trips, 40% to and from the south on Kirk Road translates into 200 truck trips per day. For some context, the number of trucks currently on Kirk Road in the morning and evening peak hour, in the course of an hour, is, if my memory is correct, between 120 and 160 truck trips during those singular hours. So, we're talking about 200 more truck trips to and from the south on Kirk per day. Currently, it's 120 to 160 truck trips on that road in an hour.
What is the, what is your opinion about, what is the off-peak impact? And the person said at dusk or dark.
So, I know that was alluding to how a lot of the truck activity is concentrated off-peak, and that is accurate, that a lot of the truck activity is forecasted based on the end user's information to occur in the late evening and in the early morning, when the quantity of traffic on Kirk Road is less, which is common for industrial facilities.
Okay. How much, someone was concerned that this project would result in a significant amount of additional traffic flowing through Geneva East on the west side of Kirk. What's your opinion about that?
We did consider whether a certain amount of car traffic may go through the subdivision, and accounted for that in the impact evaluation that we did. Based on the connectivity of that road, we would expect that the people traveling that direction are those who have a more convenient travel route between the origin, being the new building, and their destination, their homes, or flip it for the opposite commute. And so, that's something that was accounted for in our study, and generally speaking, with the improvements that are proposed and recommended at that Kirk and Geneva intersection, the operation for that west leg of Geneva Drive would be improved because of the ability to exit that street on a green light compared to the stop sign today.
But the truck weight limit that's posted would prevent trucks from going through there?
It's a six-ton weight limit, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Sarah. Get back to someone else. Okay, Renee Hanlon, would you come up? There was a, there was a kind of an argument, if you will, which I wrote as a question, asserting that this really isn't a light industrial slash warehousing use, that this is more of a truck terminal use. What is your opinion about that as a land use expert?
Well, I think the difference between warehouse and distribution is a facility where products are brought into the warehouse and stored, sorted and packaged more for the retail end user, where a truck terminal or a cartage facility is where it's just a transfer station. You have product that you're moving across the country, you unload it, load it onto different trucks, and move. So, this, what's being proposed here is the warehouse distribution, which is a permitted use in the I-1 zoning district.
Plus, as a land use attorney, I would point out that in a cartage facility, and correct me if I'm wrong, a cartage facility moves product from multiple customers across the country into its facility, transfers them, they have hundreds of, they have hundreds of sources. This facility will be operated by this Fortune 100 company for its business purposes only. Meaningful distinction?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jason Sobolski, please. There was a question about landscaping. How long will it take the plants, once planted, especially those along Kirk Road and on the berm, to mature?
Yes, as a civil engineer, I can't fully speak to that, but how it goes is, these trees are not planted like the seeds. You don't stick the seeds in the ground and let it grow. These trees are actually bought already half-grown. It's not like something you're going to plant in your backyard. So, they start at a certain mature level already. So, day one, when those trees are installed, you will have a partial screening already, and then they will grow over time, the season, based on the trees. So, it all depends on the different types of trees. As I mentioned, there are several different types of trees out there for the full mature date and the time and the size of those.
Okay, thank you. Matt Cruz, I wonder if you'd come up. There was a question about whether $600,000 a year is, number one, is really all that meaningful, and whether there would be, whether that is the extent of all of the economic benefits of this project?
Sure, and I appreciate everybody's concerns expressed tonight, and just the opportunity to engage in the conversation. One important distinction to think about, and I'm just mentioning this because it's often construed, and there are examples in suburban Chicago where towns, cities, villages have embraced warehousing and those who haven't, and you can see a direct correlation of school districts and how many schools there are. So, what warehousing brings, and this type of use brings, is the tax revenue without the kids, which is a huge thing for the school district, because they're not burdened by additional bodies that they need to account for with teachers, with facilities, with supplies, all of those things. And so, it tends to be a very beneficial use from a tax perspective, and I'm not a tax expert, but that's what I've seen firsthand as we've developed in and around suburban Chicago. I do want to mention that I'm a lifelong Chicagoan. I'm not from Texas. The guy that writes my paycheck or signs my paycheck happens to live in Dallas, but I've been in Chicago my whole life. Everybody here lives in and around suburban Chicago, so I felt it prudent to make that clear distinction. Hope that helps.
And in other, similar land use cases in other communities, I can extrapolate for that and tell you that not only the real estate taxes that Matt has talked about will be generated, that's undeniable, but the people that work here will certainly buy gas as they come to and from work. They may stop in restaurants, they may shop. It's very hard to predict, but it will not be zero of additional revenue and benefits. And I have to believe some residents of Geneva will apply for and receive jobs. Okay, thank you, Matt. I think I've addressed all the questions that I could detect, and I just have a couple wrap-up comments. Is this a time to do it or no? Or do you want to deliberate some more first?
No, I mean, if you have.
Just a couple seconds. So, in my opinion, I don't think I've been involved in recent years with a petition of this magnitude that seems to fit more squarely within what the village, the city in this case envisioned for the property. It's been said over and over again, your comprehensive plan, the county's comprehensive plan, contemplates light industrial. I've told you that the Weber Farm immediately east is soon going to be coming before you with multiple buildings that are all industrial. The people worry about their land, their property values. I understand that. I own a home myself. You've heard professional testimony that actually looked at comparables of houses abutting a very busy arterial road, namely Kirk, selling there versus selling interior, and there's been no meaningful impact. I guess we can only, you know, they say, follow the science. I guess we have to give great weight to the professional testimony, I hope. So, with that, we really appreciate your time. We hope you'll move forward and recommend approval to the city council. This project is, it's important that this Fortune 100 company know soon whether the city will invite them in. So, we'd really appreciate you, if you can, vote taking your recommendation tonight, and thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone in the public wishing to speak on rebuttal on anything that was said currently? Yes, sir. I was pointing in that general direction.
Pat Dickinson again, 619 Chandler Ave. I just wanted to reiterate for the staff, maybe not able to answer tonight, the hours of darkness, if we could get that in a percentage format, as we've heard, in an hour, it's not a significant increase, but for the hours of darkness, what is the increase in traffic on Kirk Road? The truck traffic or even car traffic as compared to normal traffic during those hours? I think that would be helpful to see in a percentage format that might stand out a little bit more than just kind of smoothing things over loosely here at the podium. So, I know they probably can't answer that tonight, but I would appreciate that information if possible.
Okay, thank you. This gentleman first, and then you will be next. Yes.
Thank you very much. Carl Bocchi, 538 Lexington Drive in Geneva. I had, I have two kind of follow-up comments. One is, our concerns about the additional traffic on the west leg of Geneva Drive has not been addressed. It's only been speculative. While we anticipate, we think, I would like something more clear of a study of what that would impact, because as has been described already in testimony, it's a very dangerous thoroughfare, and it's not being managed by the City of Geneva Police Department. I know that's not your department, but it is, it is a problem. So, I wanted to offer that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it was Pat Bugner from 581 Green Meadow. I really would like the question answered if you are at all considering this project, is why can't the truck bays and the lights that have to go all with that, why can't they be on the east side where none of the homes would be as highly impacted as they would be if all of that is on the west side? And then, I have to make this comment because I'm highly offended that someone would say that our property values are not going to be affected, because I think if you took a poll of everyone in the room and everyone in the east side, that if you had to go look for a house that was going to be backed up to a warehouse with trucks running day and night, and lights shining, and noise, that you would pay as much as somebody that's not near that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz can answer the question about the truck docks, if you'd like.
Yes, I'd like to answer that question. That'd be good.
I'll speak from my experience as a spec developer as it relates to this project and what I know about the operation. Generally, we have two different types of warehouse buildings. Single load, where you've got truck docks on one side and office-type features on the other, or cross docks, which have loading docks on both sides. In this case, the end user's operation requires a cross dock, and the reason that they require that has to do with the inside guts of how this building operates. Oftentimes, inbound trucks are on one side, outbound trucks are on the other side. Goods move through the facility in a straight path. There's racking in the middle of the building, and there's what's called speed bays that are open with no racking, which is where the dock employees would load the back of the trucks or stage loads to be put on the back of trucks that will then back up to the loading dock. In this case, operationally, there's no opportunity to have a rear load or a single-load building based on the end user's operational need.
So, in other words, Matt, there are docks on both the east and west sides of the building?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I will point out, so this building, the layout started with a building closer to Kirk Road. So, if you notice now in the site plan, most of that trailer storage is now on the west side of the building. That was with design intent, because the slope, the elevation contour falls away as you go east. That helps on two fronts, one, the visible nature of the building. So, Kirk Road is the high point. If you had an eight-foot berm there, and Jason, you've got a sight lens study, so there was a question about how much higher than the top of the berm the building sits, and I don't know offhand, is it 20 feet? And how far back does?
Sir, if you want to come forward, so speak in the microphone. Okay, we got people remotely that.
Oh, sure. Yes, that is, at the top of the building, it will be about 20 feet higher than the berm because of the elevation Mr. Cruz has mentioned. And the distance, I see my drawing over there, I believe that would probably be about 300 feet from curb line or the toe of the berm to the start of the truck facility. That is off the top of my head.
So, the base of the berm is at grade at Kirk, and it's eight feet up from there? Or where is that?
Not quite. The west side of the toe of the berm is, however, so it's an eight-foot-high-tall berm when you look at it from Kirk Road. When you actually are inside the site, it's a much taller berm because the parking dock is lower.
Got it.
So, it's more like closer to a 10-foot berm. So, it's from that toe of that slope, the inside to the truck facility is about 300 feet, roughly about that.
Okay, so you got a full eight feet from Kirk, looking.
You got a full eight, yeah, when we say eight-foot-high, we're not saying the shortest of the dimensions.
Yeah.
We're saying, we are saying the shortest, not the tallest of the dimension.
And that's the actual physical earth. That's not the top of trees or anything of that matter.
Understood.
The other thing to note with flip-flopping this layout and configuration of the building is we're sensitive to that backing-up sound the trucks do make. By putting the trailer storage on the west side of the building, those trailers that get parked there oftentimes sit there for a couple of days. Those trailer stalls, as they're called in our industry, those trucks are generally always full. They're trailers without cabs. That will further help insulate that loading and unloading sound that you do hear at the edge of the building. And so, we introduced four rows of truck parking, then a landscaped berm. It helps to further mitigate that noise concern.
There's no way to orientate the building going the other way so that the bays are facing?
North and south?
Yeah.
The site is not dimensionally able to accomplish that.
Just do the size of the building.
Correct.
John, I think you had a follow-up question? You had your hand up.
I was going to ask that very thing.
You had your hand up.
Any degree rotation of the building? Would it be possible? And you just answered that. And if your scale is right to the civil engineer, it's about 400 feet from the toe to the edge of the wall, the building, the inside toe.
So, from Kirk Road, that's closer to 500 feet.
Yeah, 125 to about 680, whatever that is, 500 plus.
And there was a virtual question regarding spec buildings. In our industry, pre-COVID, developers delivered roughly 70% speculative buildings, meaning that we build a shell building without a tenant or a user or occupier to come lease that building from us. We generally underwrite or expect 12 months of downtime. That's just the nature of how we build these buildings. In this case, the question that we heard virtually suggested this was a spec building. It's not. This is actually a building being built for this Fortune 100 company. They will move in the day that we finish the building. Their target occupancy date, no ifs, ands, or buts about it, has to be August. occupancy date, no ifs, ands, or buts about it, has to be August 1st of 2022. So they're in a very quick timeline. Generally, a spec building is, is constructed in anywhere from six to nine months, if that gives an idea of time for delivery.
And the client is not interested in any lead because of the ability of this size, obviously.
So as I mentioned before, generally, these buildings, just by the nature of the wetland-style pond that Jason's talking about, the locally sourced raw materials for concrete, the pre-cast wall construction, all of that is local material. So generally, you always would meet a base level certification. There's just administratively a process that must be pursued, and, and the end user has not chosen to pursue that here.
Yes, yes, Arica.
Someone brought up the idea of having the, foregoing the, the Geneva Drive to Kirk and basically doing all the entrance and exit from Couts Road. And so I was just wondering if that was an idea that had been considered, if you are looking at in the future more light industrial, you know, to the east and all that kind of stuff, if that was something that you considered instead of extending that road through?
So we have presented in response to City of Geneva requirements in line with the comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan shows both the extension of Division Street all the way through to Couts as well as Geneva Drive. Given what has occurred on the north end with Division Street and St. Charles and some of the, the boundaries there, we've been asked to reserve right of way for a future extension of Division Street through to Couts. And so it became a, okay, you need to do one of these. Geneva Drive was the one that was requested.
So that was per the city request? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bugner, I believe you had a follow-up question.
Is it all possible that this wonderful Fortune 500 company that has apparently a lot of money, if they are forced, if we are forced to put up with them, would they be willing to put up some of those noise walls at the back of our properties so that would at least help? A berm with trees is not going to do it for our side. That was my question.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, hi. This is Greg Knip again, 1865. Okay. Just one last thought I had is, with these trucks and the backup alarm sound, the beeping that typically they make, is that going to be an endless cacophony that we'll hear on the west side of Kirk Road? Because I could tell you, people's pets are bothered by that. I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's a pain. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to ask again, we, for rebuttal comments online, I always have to remember about our online folks. If there's anyone who wishes to speak and rebut or argue the point that was made since you last spoke, please let us know. Use your raise hand function.
Todd Ellenberger, please unmute yourself and proceed with your additional testimony.
Uh, thank you. Listening to all this, I have to comment, studies are great, especially when it's people who don't live here. Because the people who are sitting in front of you that live here in Geneva.
Todd, Todd, can you please speak more loudly and clear, please?
Sorry. I said, studies are great, especially when they're done by people who don't live in the area. The people that live here in Geneva that sit before you all seem to be very adamantly against this proposal. But I wanted to hit on a point, this, the determination between a truck terminal and a distribution center. Since I've driven a truck, since I've been in the job market of that for a very long time, their definition, the, the, the expert, quote unquote, expert, her opinion on this, I, I have to utterly disagree with. A, a distribution center, when you have a facility like this, a cross dock, you're going to have trailers that are sitting there. So you're going to have spotter trucks that are going to go grab those, grab those trailers, load them up to a dock. They're going to flip them back and forth. You're going to have all that activity. But when you have trucks sitting for more than 24 hours, which you're going to have, you're going to have weekend truckers that they're going to drop off some, they're going to drop off something on a, on a Friday. They're not going to have any pickup on Saturday. They might pick up on Sunday evening, and they'll leave the facility Monday morning or in the middle of the night on Sunday. That changes it from a distribution center to a terminal because you have truckers that sit and wait. Now, it's great that they're going to be using their own trucks, but 90% of companies don't use their own drivers. They hire out the work. So you're going to have independent contractors, owner-operators, that if they're not turning and burning, they're sitting and they're idling. That's what you're going to have here, and that's going to turn this into a terminal.
All right. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else virtually that's watching this hearing would wish to be recognized to speak at this time? Going to try Rose again? Okay, Rose, let's do it.
The commissioner now calls upon Rose Johnson. Rose, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Is she on?
She was logged on twice, and now she's only showing once.
Okay. May just be hanging or whatever, just, yeah, or it's on her phone. All right, Rose, I guess we're going to give up. Yes, John?
Mr. Commissioner, I would like very much to hear Ms. Disney Hoffey's response to quickly calculating the night hour percentage increase of truck traffic on Kirk. I think if, if we're, if we're going to make progress on this discussion this evening, I think that's some important data. You probably have it. Maybe you can do a quick calculation and share that with us.
I, I wish I did have that data. We unfortunately don't have overnight traffic counts for this area. And so I've made note of that question, but I don't have the information with me today.
I think also the traffic on Geneva, additional traffic, actual traffic numbers that are coming on Geneva Road towards, once, once the intersection's approved.
Are you talking about east of Kirk or west of Kirk?
Uh, west.
The additional traffic added west of Kirk on Geneva as a result of this project. Yes. So I believe that answer is during our peak hours, which is the information I have readily accessible right now, is an estimated 10 cars per hour.
Cars.
Cars. Correct.
So the one comment I'll make is, obviously, this is not a truck route west of Kirk Road. Trucks use GPS, sophisticated GPS systems, just like that, or we use with Waze or Google Maps. They need to be as efficient as possible to conserve fuel. They're going to go from point A to point B in the quickest way possible as permissible by law. In this case, 53 footers use Kirk Road to get down to I-88 and use the interstate system as it's designed to move from different parts of town. They're not going to be on a local street because, as you can see, it's very difficult to, for the, for the folks at Lineage Logistics, we've all been caught, or it sounds like more of us have now been caught on that road. There's nowhere to turn around. And Jack and I got caught 15 minutes trying to navigate, and it was like a game of Tetris because there's nowhere to turn around on that street. So you have to have functionality for those trucks to actually maneuver.
Yeah. All right, thank you. So, yeah, as David just reminded me, we, we are at our 10, our curfew, our 10:00 PM curfew. So is my duty to ask the commissioners if they wish to carry on this evening or defer the public hearing to another date?
I'm, I'm fine continuing. That doesn't mean we won't also continue, but.
That's, yes. Michael?
Yeah, I can continue.
Okay.
This evening.
Adam? Good. All right. Tim?
Yes, it's fine with me.
Arica?
Yes, I'm fine to continue. I'm just wondering if we're waiting on a certain amount of information, if it's, if we should, you know, continue.
Okay. Well, we'll continue on then. I did have a question for Ms. Sarah. There was, I, I think it's a really good, good question. I don't think you have the information right now, but in terms of what truck traffic we could expect on 3864 going through the downtowns. Trucks going through downtown right now, especially after Amazon, has been significantly increased. So I think, you know, I would like to have some idea of what the volumes would be through the downtown areas.
Sure. I, I mean, I can speak to the, the source of what led us to the percentages routing that we came up with originally. And it's that trucks have longer-term destinations. And so Kirk is the best way to connect to 88 to the south or I-90 to the north. And so while I, I can't tell you definitively how many of them may make a turn onto other routes that they are legally permitted to use, ultimately, their mobility is what's most important to them. And being able to connect long distances via interstates is what's common for this type of facility.
Didn't really answer my question, but it's.
Understood.
I understand, I understand the limits of the information. Actually, to take direct routes in most cases, but I think the answer will be there will be additional trucks. We just don't know what, how many at this point. Okay? Thank you. That's all I have.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, question for the applicant. So the nature of this facility, being 50, 53-foot trailers, and it sounds as though, and maybe just confirm this or clarify it, that product will be brought in from one of this company's other facilities somewhere else in the country, and then stuff from that taken across the building and then taken out of that, does it, does it go to another facility far away, or does it then go local?
I can attempt to answer that without intimate details of this company's supply chain.
Right, absolutely.
Generally, the way it works in this country, most of what we buy every day unfortunately comes in via shipping container, predominantly from China. That's starting to change as we as a country say, hey, wait a second, that may not be the best idea. It's put on a train. Six Class 1 railroads cross in Chicago because all those rail lines get pinched down south to make it under Lake Michigan, making Chicago the third largest industrial market in the country for a reason, because we have rail infrastructure that's not replicable anywhere else in the country. And so down south in Joliet, Elwood, places like that, we have large inland ports. Goods would likely come in on trains, taken off containers, put on the back of trucks, brought to a facility, a bigger facility down by the Intermodal S. The ones that are then more regionalized, that may serve five-state regions, would go to a facility like this. Some stay local. There's likely a stop after this building before it gets to its final destination, is my understanding of how this facility would operate.
Yes, sir.
Chairman?
Sure.
Come forward. Thank you very much. Again, Carl Bocchi, 58, 538 Lexington Drive. So you as, as commissioners for planning and zoning, and we as citizens are being asked to invite a business into our community that we know very little about with certain vague understandings of what they're going to be doing and what hours they're going to be working and so on. And I realize that's pressure and burden on your part, and it's certainly a worry on the homeowner's part in east Geneva. And I think for people up and down Kirk Road as well, as we've heard tonight. So I just want it to be on the record that we don't know who this entity is. We're told they're a Fortune 500 company. That means nothing to me because there's a good Fortune 500 companies and there's bad Fortune 500 companies. So please take that into consideration as you're deliberating. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, question for staff. So Geneva Road west of Kirk, is, that's the portion that has a weight limit? So.
That's correct.
So would that weight limit prohibit these trucks from, because it dead ends at the east side drive anyway, but.
It's, it's a six-ton weight limit, so my understanding is a 53 footer is, is almost double that empty and it's lighter.
Right. So I guess nothing can prohibit them, but they'd be breaking a local traffic law.
Correct.
Could be mitigated with, if, if drivers understand, they may be ticketed, I suppose, but.
I'm just thinking, John, in terms of the improved intersection, so additional people using it to get out to Kirk, and then also get access to all these jobs that are going to happen in this area.
Right.
So you're going to have people going back and forth, heading out to lunch, whatever. There's going to be significant additional.
Right.
Cars just accessing the area and heading back into town.
If, if it's traffic that's going to the facility, I can see it being more cars. But I think Division Street is so highly used now, and it is lighted as well. I think the pattern, if someone's going up to St. Charles or to work to one of the employment centers up there, that might not change all that much dropping down on Geneva Drive, but.
It'd be more just people trying to get over to Couts using.
Right. Yeah, especially since it shoots to Couts.
Till Division gets done, if it ever does. I mean.
Right.
They're asking for it, I guess. Maybe it won't get expanded at some point. Yes, sir?
So you, you are very clearly working very hard to come up with the right decision, and we respect that. This particular company has a, a date by which it needs to know that it can move into this facility if it's going to be approved. I know you've asked, and our traffic consultant has told you she doesn't exactly know how many trucks are traveling right now at night. She has told you that there will be a significant number of our trucks that will be delivering in the evening hours. I, I guess, I, I'm just wondering, frankly, whether, I mean, you can take it as a given that there will be more trucks at night than there are, significantly more trucks at night. But I, I guess I, I wouldn't think that would affect your decision. It's, it, it, it's a truck route. It's a truck, a heavy road, and we can't change that. So, I mean, that, that is what you'll hear if you decide to continue this to the next meeting. I'm sure Sarah will come back and tell you that right now there are 50 trucks at night, and that'll double. I, I, I'm making that up. I don't know. So I'm just hoping you can take all you've heard and maybe take action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Rebecca?
There've been many people who've spoken about the concerns with noise, and, and one person brought up the idea of, you know, barriers and things like that. Are there other things that could be considered to mitigate some of the noise concerns that, I mean, that's a big, this is a big sticking point with a lot of the neighbors and so.
The berm stops it. That's what the study shows.
Yeah. So Jack Raven, who? So Jack Raven, who works in my office, to answer your question directly, happy to consult the end user, Anne Kinley Horn, who prepared the sound study, what other mitigating factors might be considered here in accordance with their research and their expert, expertise, I guess is the right word, right? They're showing that the sound is mitigated by the landscape berm here. Now, I am in the same position as many folks here. You know, all I have is this to go by and what the expert is telling us, that it meets code. It's significantly below code.
Yeah, they put receptors on the road, and that's like how they help project. That's how they help project the sound. And this is, it's a, it's a contour, a noise contour is what they, they were explaining it to me. And you can see on the east side, you see the contours kind of go out in a, in a far banner. On the west side, you can see it's, the berm is that green line on the west side of the property. The sound, you can see it gets kind of, it deadens right there, and it drops all the way down to that, like a 50 decibel level, which is roughly what they're saying is kind of in the area right now, especially when you take into account the airport itself. So the area right now, because the airport is in a 45 to 50 decibel area. So that's kind of like as a background, what we're dealing with.
So I assume the concerns are more about the blast of sounds, whether it's the brakes or the backup.
It's Rebecca's microphone. It's your microphone.
Oh.
You know, the concerns are around the, the blasts of sound.
Sure.
That are going to interrupt the daily, so I understand the background noise or the, you know, the noise that's generated at a base level. So is there anything that says, like, you know, when the, when the trucks are backing up, when the brakes and things like that?
So my, you asked me a question earlier too. Are there other, a sound fence was inquired about. I don't see something being able to be done on the west side of Kirk Road because frankly, you've got a number of property owners that would all have to consent to that, as well as King County, if you're trying to put that in KDOT right away. Now, could something be added to the berm side on the property itself of this development? Potentially, and I'm happy to ask that question and further consult with the, the noise study provider, if that's something that the commission would like us to do.
To piggyback off of Rebecca's question, I was thinking the same thing when someone mentioned a noise wall, that it would be hard to get multiple property owners to agree that they want a 10 or 12-foot solid fence like this, that's along the interstate behind their home. But is there enough room potentially on the west side of Kirk to add any kind of berm insulation with some, with some landscaping?
You've got the same issue, where you need consent required.
From the, from the, from the KDOT, if it's in there right away.
Right.
I'm not suggesting on individual property owners' property. I'm just thinking of the air brakes, the jig brakes, or whatever it is, and the acceleration, deceleration. I think is the, is the noise that folks are more worried about with the assumption that the, that the operations on site operate as you, as you've dictated.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's when somebody leaves that site and they go north or south on Kirk Road that they become a noise source more proximate to the homes.
Sure. And I honestly don't know the answer to that question. Is that something that could be done or not?
Yeah.
Jason, does, does the site balance? I just asked the civil engineer if our site balances or if we had a surplus of topsoil.
Right, okay, oh, sure. Any, any calculation on if you add another foot to the height of your berm, does that, does that reduce sound by X percent or X decibels? I'm just curious if, if an eight-foot berm became a 10-foot, would it further insulate? It's certainly only noise sourced from the site, not, not from exiting trucks, but just, just a question if that's.
So it does have a positive impact. I know that because the original sound study was run on a six-foot berm. It was updated to reflect the eight-foot berm. So my, two questions. Jason, do we have the, the land to do three-to-one slope?
Yeah, I will, I'll speak to that. So we are currently bound by the KDOT expanding right away and our curb line, where our berm is completely maxed out at a three-to-one slope, which is what's deemed as a safe mobile slope typically for your ponds used. And we have a, I believe it's a three-foot top of height berm there. So we are, we are maxed out from that perspective, so that's where we.
So, so one other way of approaching it, if you can't do it with soil because of slumping or anything else that happens when you build up earth, is to increase density of vegetation.
Correct, and that's what, we, obviously, the, the consultant here is not here, but that was taken into account during the study.
I mean, it appears to be dense to me.
Yes.
It's going to be, there's going to be open spaces and gradually things will grow together, but.
Right, right. So if you were just having eight-foot high berm without the landscaping, the density of that, that's provided, it would have a more impact of sound release where this, the density of the trees are going to block it.
Right.
Is there a way, I mean, landscaping is generally a solution that is both attractive from a curb appeal standpoint and cost-effective relative to sound walls.
Right.
Which tend to be ugly and really expensive.
Right.
That's something that in speaking as the developer here, not ultimately the one paying for this, I can commit that we could be spending more dollars on landscaping so that day one is more of the filled-in environment. I know we'd have to coordinate with your landscape designer, but that's something we're more than happy to do and would commit to doing.
Yes, sir. There's someone in the back.
John Baumgartner, 1594 Wesley Court. Talking about the noise here and how high the berm and the landscaping is going to be. I assume that noise deflects off the building. And hopefully you can answer this. The building is, what, 40 feet high? Approximately 40 feet high. How high is that berm? How high is that landscaping compared to the deflection and noise off that building that's 40 feet high? That's my question.
The, the best way I can answer it, it's reflected in the graphic. That accounts for every sound inducing or producing environment on site, whether it's trucks, HVAC units on the roof, ancillary sounds of, of truck movements, car movements around that property. All that's accounted for as it's reflected out. And because the property sits lower, remember, you're going to have sound down low echoing up. And then you've got a landscape berm that's further going to direct those sound waves up. That's the best that I can answer, not being a noise expert.
Seventy-five. To me, it looks like the average site topography is about 15 feet below the height of Kirk Road.
Correct.
And then your building base, your, your flat, your finished floor is at approximately 791 versus Kirk Road at just about 800. So the height of your building will end up being about 36 feet above the top of Kirk Road. So a 40, 44, 45-foot building, the way you've worked the site, is only about 3600, 36 feet above the top of Kirk. Does that, that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
And most of the noise source will be at dock level, which is the first 20 feet or maybe 15 feet of the building.
Correct.
And that seems to be about at or below the top of the berm.
Correct, and that's the intent.
Okay, that's helpful.
The, the video itself, and then also in this graphic you can see in the top right, to help everyone visualize what the berm actually looks like when it's built as opposed to, you know, the stick drawing, which is, you know, the standard for the Civil, was, that, that's what it's going to look like. So that's kind of the landscaping initially with the trees a little younger, but still clearly there with the shrubbery. And then the chunk of the building that you're going to see, which is just really that top, top part of, of the precast panel.
That brings up a good point. So the way those videos are created, they're, the, the company builds a full-scale, three-dimensional model using architectural drawings, Jason, civil engineering drawings that have actual topographic survey data. They spot survey using GIS elevation contours for the neighborhood. And so this is in actual presentation of, of where that building, top of buildings sit relative to standing on Kirk Road. This vantage point is someone standing on Kirk Road, so call it six feet above. That's what you'll see. And when we had the graphic in the video showing the view from the neighborhood, the reason that dotted building was just about fence line for those homeowners is because of that property falling away from you. I think this would be an entirely different conversation if this particular development site sat high relative to the neighborhood.
Remind me, Jayton, for I-1, what's, what's the level building height?
Not all that off the top of my head, but I have it right here, so give me one second.
I believe it's 80 feet, but we can.
Eighty feet?
Maybe 50.
Yeah, maximum height in the I-1 district is 50 feet.
Okay, so, so we're, we're under that and we're on a lower site. And I'm just finding myself thinking, and we're getting into some deliberation here, but I'm finding myself thinking that the, the master plan has this as industrial over time. And if you make the assumption that this tenant is not here, some tenant will be here or a multiple number of buildings will be here, both on this site and the site to the east, all of those will create traffic that, the desire of both the, the city of St. Charles and the city of Geneva is to have Geneva Road and Division at some point connect to Couts and, and Kirk Road. There's going to be these issues at some point. I don't think we're going to avoid them over time with, these are going to be developed, and it's going to be developed, hopefully, as, as industrial, which is the plan of the city and the desire of the city. So I don't know that we're ever going to truly avoid having these same issues. We're going to have signaled intersections and truck traffic coming from the east onto Kirk Road and going north and south.
I'd say that's fine, John, but the scale of this facility is what concerns me. The, the scale of the building concerns me.
So I can tell you, in my industry, this is a relatively small building. So you've got to imagine.
In Geneva, it isn't.
Fair, but this, but this is what you'll see. So I-1 uses, this is what you see. So if you look in the, in West Chicago, you see buildings that are larger than this being proposed, built. You know, we build buildings that are 50 football fields under one roof. As we all buy more goods online, this is the byproduct of how we get those goods. They can be viewed in a positive light through tax revenues, lack of burden on schools, and other ancillary benefits.
Just the, the building a facility this size near a residential area, that's the concern.
Understood.
So, yeah, if it's sitting in the middle of an industrial park, yeah, you could build a 80 football field. But not right next door to a residence. Yes, sir.
Follow-up to this landscaping. Question I have is, David Walensiyak, 578 Lexington Drive, sorry, it's getting late. Of the landscaping that's going to be included, and I didn't read through that whole document, what percentage is regular trees? Because if this is going to be doing noise abatement in the fall and winter time, those trees are not going to be providing much. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer that, and so obviously, we live in the Midwest where we know what happens with regular trees for screening purposes. Generally, we try to always use evergreens because those are functional all year round. So in scenarios like this, you try to pick vegetation that provides the same benefit all year round. That's the intent here, and that's what would be provided.
Thank you.
In looking at drawing L6 on the landscape plan, it's got the berm listed. And there are a number of spruce, junipers, but there are also a considerable amount of, you've got hawthorn, linden, dogwoods, coffee trees, oak trees. So there might be maple tree, maple trees, multiple of each of those. So there could be some consideration to moving those more to an evergreen rather than deciduous trees, which are.
I agree.
Are just branches six months of the year, right?
I agree.
Yes, sir. That's Ashner from Lexington Drive. I'm just wondering about the subsequent development that the gentleman talks about.
Sir, sir, just, just wait.
I'm, I'm wondering about the subsequent development that the gentleman is talking about a little bit further east. I think some of the documentation indicates that it's almost a million-square-foot facility, four different buildings, further to the east. And I'm just wondering if the traffic studies have taken into account his Weber Farm development, which, if I'm correct, is, you know, a million six, uh, 1,065,000 square feet.
Sarah? I think you've talked, answered that one.
Yes, but it's worth stating again, we did account for the potential for that property to develop. We received information through staff, and so that was a very coordinated effort to make sure we were accounting for traffic generated by that future property. As I mentioned earlier, KDOT requires that our traffic study look 20 years into the future. And so we considered general regional growth and those known developments. In addition to those, there is a planned industrial development to the immediate north in St. Charles. We accounted for that traffic too. Any developments that are contemplated or known, we incorporated that into our study.
For the 2040, right, so in terms of what this law says at 2040? I think that's what you said.
All of our recommendations are based on, we, we actually did a 10-year design horizon and a 20-year design horizon, and so we included it in our 2031 and 2041 analyses.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the city's traffic consultant, Matt Baldwin of Trans Systems, actually reviewed both traffic studies. So the one submitted by Sam Schwartz for this development and the potential development to the east. So there were two different traffic studies. Our city consultant reviewed both of them. I believe Matt Baldwin is still with us if he wants to make any additional comments on that at this time.
No, I don't have any additional comments beyond what Sarah just mentioned, but if there's any questions that, you know, staff has for me or the committee has, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
All right, thank you. I don't know. Do we have any other outstanding questions that are going to take longer than? I think that's the thing, is we're down to, like, is there additional input that needs to be brought before us that we haven't seen?
I think we know the common themes: traffic, safety, noise, lighting, neighborhood effect. But we've heard good commentary and, and good input.
Yep. So, yes, sir.
Pat Dickinson, 619 Chandler Ave. So we're not contesting the fact that there's industry across from Geneva East. We're not contesting the outstanding presentation, code, legality of everything presented here tonight. Kirk Road is a truck route, but amazingly, when it gets dark out, Geneva East gets to sleep. That's going to go away should this project be approved, and it's a reality. It's not, I'm not going to get into the, the landscaping trees. The reality is, it does still allow us to be a residential area, part of Geneva community we've been a part of for a quarter century, most of us over there. That's going to end should this begin. to end should this begin.
Thank you, sir.
To, to the extent that I can use the information we have available to answer that, I understand it's a concern of the community and a concern of this commission. The total daily traffic volume on Kirk Road is 29,000 vehicles per day. So for context, if there are approximately 500 trucks projected to be generated, truck trips, tied to the definition we gave earlier, truck trips per day from this facility, 500 daily truck trips relative to that 29,000 on Kirk Road, I hope that gives you some general context about what would be generated by this facility.
What's missing, I think, is between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM-
Understood.
What, what happens?
Yes.
I think that's, that's important for folks to hear and understand and consider its impact.
I do hear that that is the question. As I'm sure you guys know, because you review many of these studies, it, I have never seen a traffic study evaluate overnight conditions because, as I said, it's common to look at the period when traffic is most concentrated because then the improvements would accommodate off peak conditions when traffic is less.
What you do have, though, is we know now that the traffic in the middle of the night is manageable. What you do have is a, a source of truck traffic in the middle of the night that can give you definitive information about how many trips they'll, that will occur between those hours. That, just adding that number to the baseline that's there today, whatever that is, and maybe you don't know those numbers, but adding whatever it is, 40 trucks over the night, or 200 trucks, or whatever it is, between those hours, that will help us and help folks get their arms around the potential impact to, to sleeping across the street.
So to make sure I'm understanding what you just said, commissioners, if we can look and quantify the truck traffic during those 9:00 PM to 4:00 AM hours, is that what you're asking from this development?
At least from your source. You've got a source that can give you, they've got a number of these facilities. They can probably give you very accurate information. The trip, the, the timing, because they know their shifts, they know how much comes in, they know exactly where it's going. They can probably give you very accurate information, better than anything you can extrapolate by making assumptions about adjoining properties or other developments.
Yeah, the information that I don't have is existing traffic on Kirk Road.
And I don't even think you need that. I think we, we know what the base is, but what will this property be adding on a nightly basis to the traffic on Kirk Road between those hours?
Sure.
I think we've received testimony that the bulk of the truck movement occurs in the late hours.
Correct.
So that's where it's coming from.
Yeah, outside of the peaks. Yes, generally in the late evening-
Outside of normal business hours.
And early morning. So, yes, that, that's confirmed of those 510 daily truck trips, that it would be majority late evening and early morning.
And I, I guess, I'm posing that, do we want more definitive information than just that the majority will, will come between those hours?
Yeah, we can, we can quantify that, like, and go and jot that down right now and come up with an answer.
I mean, I would think the user would have-
We have an hourly breakdown.
You do? Okay.
Apparently, we have it now.
It's worth taking a couple minutes to find that, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael, I was talking to David.
From what John was asking, it's not just the increase, but it's the increment, I think, relative to what is there currently. And that's, and I think that's the information that she said she doesn't have, is that-
Right. Another testimony we received is that the bulk of their truck movements are in the late hours. That's all we know. That's the only, that's the testimony we received up to this point.
But, but are we trying to understand how that relates to what the current overnight traffic is?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, so-
We don't have a baseline.
Right, and that's information that she doesn't have tonight. Is that right? Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's not just the traffic.
You gotta come up to, state your name and address again, please.
Pat Bugner, 581 Green Meadow. It's not just the traffic, it's the noise level. As the gentleman said, we really do, as it gets later, the traffic, it gets quiet enough that you could get yourself to sleep. Between 9:00 and 4:00 AM with trucks backing up and beeping, and I'm sorry, but they haven't taken into account, because I live there, I live by the airport, I, I, sound travels. If the wind direction is one way, it's louder. So it's not just the traffic level, it is the noise. And it will come over that berm. I'm sorry.
The, the fact that it's a 24/7 facility.
Yes. There will be no time to relax and, and sleep because it will be going. And they, they're saying the majority of what they're doing is between 9:00 and 4:00 AM. Well-
As far as the truck movements are concerned.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the commissioners? It's getting late. Nobody's raising their hand.
Maybe we do have somebody raising their hand if we want to move to them. I, I don't know what we're doing right now. Are we doing-
We're still on a public hearing, so, okay.
Are we, are we doing commission discussion?
Well, we are doing commission discussion with rebuttals. Yeah, questions. Yeah, let's go ahead. So let's, there's someone virtually who wishes a comment, so we're going to allow them to comment. Since the public hearing is still open.
Todd Ellenberger, the commission calls upon you to make your testimony.
Yes, Todd Ellenberger, 1854 Chandler. First, I just wanted to say, I can see Kirk from the back of my house. And, you know, between these hours of 9:00 and 4:00, I can open up my windows and there's little to no truck traffic at all. If this facility opens up, that's going to change. So, yeah, they're doing a study to find out what your truck traffic is right now, overnight, not only Monday through Friday, but Sunday through Saturday. That's going to be your baseline. That's what you need. Because if you're going to add 500 trips, you're going to have an increase in trucks. And it's going to be a lot louder, just traffic-wise, than what we have right now on, on this side of town. Then I had a question. I didn't know if it was answered. If it was, please forgive me. The gentleman earlier had asked, what exactly is going to be done for the increase in traffic on Geneva Drive west of Kirk? Now, I understand they're putting a light and it's going to, you know, help with turning and this and that. But the gentleman raised a concern about parks. There's kids on that street. If you increase traffic on that street, what is Geneva or whoever going to do to protect the citizens in an increased traffic route, especially children? I haven't heard that answer. Okay? The other thing is, as a person who drives a truck, I take offense to people who know or who say they know what truckers do. Nobody there, unless you've driven a truck, you don't know. A trucker will go through a restricted area if it means it's the straightest route possible. He doesn't care if he's overweight limit. He doesn't care if the bridge isn't rated for his crossing. He doesn't care if it's a residential. A ticket for a truck driver is cheaper than coming in late. Because if he comes in late, that's lost money, that's lost revenue for him. But a ticket, a $50 ticket is nothing compared to a couple hundred dollars for coming in early. You have to take in consideration that. Even if Geneva is marked off west of Kirk, no trucks, weight limit, et cetera, et cetera, you're still going to have people who drive down that and trucks that are over, over limit. Unless you're going to have traffic cameras there that are going to catch that, it's going to happen. It's going to happen once, it's going to happen twice. Not, you're not going to have a cop there all the time to be able to get everything. The other thing I want to point out is, with the increased truck traffic, I don't know, I don't know how streets and sanitation works in Geneva. Excuse me. But if anybody has been around trucks, you'll know that in the state of Illinois, on our interstate system, on our tollway system, there are no scales. Trucks have to be a maximum of 80,000 pounds, period. It has to be divided over certain, over their axles in a specific way. 99% of the trucks on Illinois roadways are overweight limit. Your gravel trucks, they get loaded, there's no scales. You have trucks that go from distribution center to distribution center. They're not scaled, they're not weighted. The more trucks that you have in this area from a quote-unquote "distribution center" that are going to get overloaded, you're going to have more problems with your infrastructure, your roads, your sewers, and everything else. And that's something else you guys need to take into consideration. Because the heavier a truck is, the longer it takes to stop. If it takes, if it takes 100 feet to stop a truck going 25 miles an hour, how many cars is that truck going to plow into because he can't stop on time? Overweight is a concern. Places like this, Amazon delivery, when they come over, when they come over in my area, a lot of times these little Sprinter vans are so overloaded and, and their weight is shifted that they'll come down my street sideways. But there's no, there's no restriction on them. There's no oversight. There's nobody checking their load, just like on a majority of the roads around here, there's nobody checking a trucker's load. You have to be on Interstate 55, 57. There's nothing on 90 until you get in, until you get into Wisconsin. There's nothing until you get in Iowa. A majority of them, nobody crosses. And a trucker will go out of his way to go around a scale house if he's over on his logs or if he's overweight on his axles. That's all.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your testimony.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes.
I, I think we've frankly reached an impasse here. I think we've made it clear to the petitioner that we're in need of some additional data as to overnight traffic patterns from an established baseline. There was some discussion by Mr. Mead as to additional information about the type of trees and such at the top of the berm and what impact that might have on further reducing potential noise levels. I think in fairness to the applicants and the people in the audience, given the late hour, I think at this point, the prudent course is to close the public comment, reconvene once the applicants are able to give us a substantial information, and continue the public comment at that point.
All right, continue the public hearing.
Yeah, this way.
Yeah, okay.
We do have one new person that did raise a hand.
Being sensitive to the, to the stated interest to get this done as soon as possible for their tenant, for their owner, occupier, operator, is there room on the docket two weeks from now to include this?
As of right now, there is.
If I, if I might observe, although I'm sure David and Jayton know this, you'll need-
Sir.
You'll need to continue this to a date certain, or otherwise we'll have to publish again, so-
Oh, yeah, no, we always do that.
We will do that.
That is a standard. We never, ever continue without a date certain and place.
Thank you.
Ever. We definitely make sure of that. Okay, I've been told, in my ear telling me, there's somebody online, so, so that there's somebody that wishes to speak, so I'm going to recognize that person.
All right, the commission now calls upon David Hermes. David, please proceed to unmute yourself.
Yeah, my comment is to the gentleman who was speaking about trucks. I drive a truck. I've been over to Lineage, okay? I've seen that they do leave trucks out on the street. But you know what? Half the trucks come back if they're overweight. The closest scale around here is either in Bolingbrook or Rochelle, Illinois, okay? Now, I've seen Batavia police pull trucks over and weigh them at the Aldis facility. So they do enforce the weight limits in this area. I, there's a coat, there's a driver that works for the company I drive for, he has got an overweight ticket over on 59. I've seen portable scales over on Route 64. So, you know, they do force truck weight limits in this area. Now, with all the truck noise, you guys were complaining about loud jake brakes. Well, I've seen towns where they put up an ordinance, no jake brakes. And you can ticket the driver for putting his jake brakes on. And with overweight, you can charge them by the pound. Because if you go across a scale and you're overweight, they charge you by the pound. So, you know, there's all kinds of different remedies. Like the truck I drive, it has a Tri-Pak, which it, my truck don't idle. I have a Tri-Pak. It's a lot quieter, less fuel. Now, there's a lot of trucks over in Geneva, over on Geneva Drive right now, probably sitting there with their Tri-Pak on, not idling. Because Geni, over there at Lineage, they hold them forever. It's called, you can't hold the driver in, at the facility for a long time. Because if you do, then, you know, he runs out of time, so then he's got to sleep at their facility. Or he's going to go over his logs. By the way, truck drivers do not have logbooks anymore. It's all electronic and you can't lie. So that's what I had to say about all that. Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just following up on my earlier comment, if there's no one else online, I'm going to make a motion to, to close the public comment at this point.
To continue the-
You want to continue.
To, to continue the public hearing, that's correct.
Good data.
Okay. So, motion to continue the public hearing? To what date and time and please?
Two weeks from today, that's correct.
To September 23rd.
September 23rd? Is that their next meeting?
It is.
Is, is that enough time for the applicant to respond to some of these items? Yes?
Yes.
September 23rd.
In this location, City Hall. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Rebecca. So, yes, please call a roll.
Okay, to continue to September 23rd. Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill.
Mataskill, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Flifka.
Flifka, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
And Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Passes.
All right, so we will tick up this item again on the 23rd, everyone. So appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, it's, it is what it is. With my markings on it as well.
My watch has been beeping at me.
We've got a meeting going on here, public.
All right, all right, everybody, please. Everybody, we still have a few things to do.
Folks, folks.
If you would please-
We still have some other business to, to wrap up.
We have a few other things we have to do on our agenda, so we can go home. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. I think it's still nice out, you can go out there.
Yes.
Again, can we, if you're not using your microphone, please turn it off. If you're not using your microphone, can we please turn them off, Tim? John?
All right, so I have one more. All right, so I have one more, I'm one more official thing on it in terms of public comment, since, again, we have meetings virtually. It's on our agenda. If there's anyone in the public who just wishes to address the commission on, like, any fact, any issue whatsoever, this is your time to do so. So, it's on our agenda, and we always make sure we do that. So, and I don't hear anybody, so we will not move on to other business.
All right, so
What else do we have on the 23rd, I guess?
Yeah, so, obviously, we will have a meeting on September 23rd to continue the public hearing from this evening. We do not have any other public hearings scheduled for that meeting at this time. I guess just some background information, we are anticipating getting some more applications turned in to the city. I mean, I think, we know of three for sure. We probably have at least one or two more on top of that. So, we should be, we should have some meetings coming up, possibly November, December, just depending on how quickly staff reviews them, so.
Busy, busy.
Just an update on past projects, too. The variation on Illinois Street was approved by the city council Monday, as was the map amendment for the Ballvers Room, 419 West 8th Street. And then the land cash text amendments, the increase of fair market value was also approved.
All right.
I see that, I drove by the Lewis Road Emma's Landing site today, and they're cutting trees down, and there's a porta potty on the site, so that's good news.
What, by Saturday? I didn't see anything.
I went by today, so.
We've officially closed, so property is in their ownership now, and they had their pre-construction meeting earlier this week.
Awesome. That's great.
All right. Wow. Big deals.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, anything else? I don't have men.
Dunkin' Donuts.
It just can't be a meeting without
I mean, they've been hiring for, yeah, right. I think so. Maybe
When they're open, you'll have donuts at the meeting.
At this meeting.
Who, who made the donuts?
All right, who's going to give you a motion then?
Move to, move to adjourn. Mim or the
Thank you, John.